I'd like to call to order the Middletown City Council's strategic planning session for, what is this, Friday, February 25th, 2022? We'll start with a moment of meditation. We'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance even though we are minus a quarter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glenn, if you might, will you call out absolutely? Councilman Muterswell?
Here.
Councilman Moon?
Here.
Councilman Neny?
Here.
Councilman Neny, sorry. Councilman Farrell?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Except for Garrett. We've got Jim to carry it away.
Absolutely. Good evening, good afternoon. Welcome everybody to the Middletown City Council's strategic planning session for 2022. What a volatile, ever-changing, dynamic world we live in. Here we are. We've just seen Russia invade the democratic nation of Ukraine. We're coming out of two years of a pandemic. Inflation is raging while the economy is still doing well. And something I didn't expect to see as I drove in this morning, and I'm sure you all probably, who have been here a long time, used to see it, but it was a surprise to me. Big permanent signs in front of Cleveland Cliffs that says "Now Hiring." That's probably been a while, I'll bet. That's pretty amazing, pretty unusual. So it's a good thing. It talks about how, you know, there is a lot of job opportunities out there and the world is changing. But all of that basically is a lead-in to say, what better time to take a few days to reflect on strategic planning? And I think this has been a long tradition for the city of Middletown. You very much have consistently done this year after year. I was here last year when, for the first time, we came here to Atrium. So we're back. It's a great venue. So we're really pleased that our friends and our partners here from Atrium allowed us to come back. It's a nice opportunity. What we're going to do is I'm going to try to lead you through a lot of this stuff, but at various times, you'll also be hearing from Susan. You'll be hearing from other department heads. And please, it's very, very casual. It's very informal. The idea is to interact, to share information, to talk about issues. And so at any given time, please don't hesitate. Just jump in with questions, with comments, or whatever. The idea is to be reflective, to take the time that we don't usually get, to have that chance to really talk through ideas, initiate concepts, bring them forward, and so for the first time, just kind of kick things around. Created a theme for today, and I love acronyms if you don't know that. So I always come up with acronyms. I think a lot of people realize that. So it's kind of a way to remember things. Can we collectively be smarter? So that acronym is just kind of an exercise, a thought process, as we kind of go through what we're going to do. And we'll talk about it. First of all, I just want to look at our agenda as we go through this. So I think we're all aware. We put this out, but just so that anybody has any questions. Today, of course, we're going to just give you a brief welcome and introduction here for 15 minutes and then take a quick revisit of what we did last year. Of course, we were here last year. We had a chance to go through vision, mission, values, core values. And then we want to just look at what have we accomplished since that meeting last year of what we brought up for the first time last year? And then what's still on the runway? What did we talk about? What still has to be done? And then we want to talk about organizational employment issues today. It's a really big topic. It seems to rear its ugly head all the time. It's sort of, as I talked about, lots of hiring out there. Well, it hasn't escaped us as well. Retention and recruitment, a big, big issue. Our collective bargaining agreements, we'll update you on that. Talk a little bit about premium pay. Tell you where we are with that compensation and classification study. Long-term staffing goals and priorities and kind of kick that around a little bit. Another issue, and this actually was discussed last year. We're going to discuss it again because, again, we'd like to see maybe some more direction in where you are today on some of these issues, which is how do you feel about supporting and sponsoring things like parades, events, various kinds of programming, whether it's one-time or recurring, nonprofits? Should it be as a yearly RFP versus ad hoc? How does it look in terms of in-kind versus cash contributions? We'll take a brief break from 6:00 to 6:15. It'll allow you to get some dinner, which we will have catered in. Thank you, Amy, for that. 6:15 to 6:45, we're going to talk a little bit about marijuana policy, just so that everybody is well-understood as to what exactly is our current moratorium? What does it mean? If you do want to change it, how would that happen? What could you do? Do you want to plan for the future as things change further? What are the differences between production, retail, dispensary, et cetera? A little discussion on do we believe that statewide recreational is coming? If so, how do you prepare for it? And then we'll finish the evening with a discussion and some updates on our Middletown Regional Airport, specifically the FBO contract, a little bit about the management that we hope to bring forward, and a little bit of a discussion on the new facilities and some of the expected improvements. And then if we stay on schedule, we'll adjourn and we'll be out of here at 7:15 tonight. Tomorrow, then, we hope to have you back at 8:30. 8:30, we'll have breakfast for you till 9:00. 9:00 to 10:15, we've got a presentation for you on a concept for some homelessness, transitional housing, a pilot concept. Then 10:15 to 11:45, we really want to dig into capital reinvestment, talk about our policy that we put into effect last year on the post-audit surplus and how we might want to use that. That'll take us through lunch at 11:45. During lunch, from 11:45 to 12:30, Chris Shell will be talking to you about economic development. So she'll be going over the Small Business Grant Program and asking you some questions about what you would like to see in terms of levels of risk, priority, policy, updating you on industrial, commercial, retail, mixed use. And then we'll give you a little bit of an update as well on the town mall and where that project is. At 12:30 and 1:15 tomorrow, then, we'll talk about housing and neighborhood infill, bring you up to speed on what we know as far as the former hospital site, Roosevelt Lincoln sites, the Vale site, our At Home project, another acronym. I love those acronyms. Mall and I-75 corridor, as well as the Manchester Snyder and Swallowens lot in terms of an urban center project. Finish out the day, then, from 1:15 to 1:45, revisit our ARPA budget and funds, talk about the city's budget, where we are with the request for county funding, some of our opportunities and challenges, and of course, any possible amendments. And we have the topics of both Manchester Snyder and Aquatic Center as well. And by that time, we should be at about 1:45 to 2:00. And hopefully, we've accomplished some things and you'll be able to go home. So collectively, can we be smarter? The acronym is smarter. So as we consider projects, when we debate policy, when we allocate scarce resources, and I think that's an interesting statement because the basic definition of macroeconomics is the allocation of scarce resources. And I think there's few better definitions, frankly, for what we do in local government as well as the allocation of scarce resources. So much of what we do is allocating scarce resources. That's what a city council does all the time. When we act as representatives of all of our constituencies, and again, that's what we all have to be cognizant of all the time. And when we exhibit courage or conviction based on the greater common good, not that which is easy or politically expedient. What is S? S is strategic. That's what we're here for, strategic planning. What does that mean? Why are we strategic? Well, it relates to the identification of long-term or overall aims and interests and the means to achieving them. So it's about stepping back and thinking long-term as we look out into the future. And I think we may have mentioned that we try not to call this a retreat because retreat by its very nature says we're stepping back. And really strategically, we want to move forward. We want to think about the future and think about how we move into the future. Because being strategic means ensuring the organizational's core competence is consistently focusing on those directional choices that will best move the organization toward its new future with the least risk and in the most orderly fashion. So focusing on directional choices, moving the organization forward into the future with the least risk in the most orderly fashion. What about M? This is interesting, and I like this one. Market-driven, it's not one that typically shows up in government discussions, but I think it is important because sometimes it's not necessarily what we would like or desire or hope for, but we want to think of it in terms of that which is economically possible and sustainable. For instance, I think we're all familiar with the fact that in many cases, you might have a building that is structurally sound, but it may be economically obsolete. And the market will tell you that. You may have a program of service that might feel emotionally or politically satisfying, but actually, it may show a return on investment that almost borders on the absurd. So not that there might still not be value in some of these things, but you have to think of it in terms of, is it efficient from a market perspective? Does it make sense in that regard? Are we only doing it because we've forced it to be into being because the government is subsidizing it so much? Or is there more to it than that? A, aspirational. This is a good word, a big word, aspirational. The idea of that in the absence of a vision, a dream, or a plan for what heightened or unrealized measures of success look like, we contribute to the likelihood that such successes remain unrealized. You know, the old saying, you will miss 100% of the shots you don't take. That's sort of aspirational. The idea is we got to have a vision, we got to have a dream, we got to believe or we're never going to get there. Another great quote, "If you don't know where you're going, any path will do." That's what we're about this next couple of days. We're trying to create that path, understand what the path is so that we really know how to get there. So we have to get past a sense of collectively shared inferiority complex. That's a big part of being aspirational. You know, you have to give up the baggage of the past, discard that equally, on the other side of that coin, a superiority complex that may be a vestige of a bygone age. You don't want on either side of that, but you just want to be open to the opportunity. However, when you talk about being aspirational, if all you are is aspirational, you're going to have your head in the clouds, you're probably never going to get anything done. So what is the companion, the complement to this that's so important that comes next? Realism, being realistic. So if we pair aspirational with realism, then we can actually be candid and forthright about the challenges and limitations that we have. We know that we have challenges and limitations. We got to be willing to talk about them, lay them out, and recognize what we can do and what we can't. So we probably shouldn't be focusing time, effort, or resources in the pursuit of goals, objectives, or aspirations which realistically hold little opportunity for success. And I'm always a big fan of quality over quantity. If you have to do something and you're allocating scarce resources, then focus on quality over quantity. And what I've heard a lot in this community since I've been here, let's build on a few small wins. Let's try to get those in place and then maybe they happen more often and they get bigger over time. T, transformative. The effort or actions which lead to transformation. What is transformation? It's a thorough or dramatic change in form or appearance. The goal, of course, is that such transformation be in a positive direction. So if we're transforming in a positive direction, not a negative one, then being transformative, I think, is something to certainly aspire to. E, we got several Es, and I think they're all equally important. First is efficiency. We hear about efficiency in government all the time. We want to be well-organized. We want to be competent. We want to achieve maximum productivity with minimum wasted effort or expense. But sometimes you can be efficient and not equitable. So we also very much need to be equitable. And equitable, equity is about justice and fairness, to distribute effort and resources in an impartial and balanced manner in a quest to further the common or collective good. And then the third E, economically justifiable. Does the cost qualify as an efficient use of limited resources? Is it equitable? I like to say, does it pass the smell test? We all kind of know what that means. You know, you sort of see it on the surface. Does it make sense? And how does it fare from Rick's perspective out there above the fold and bold-faced type? Right? All right. And finally, R. R gets three Rs too, R, R, R. Reinvested. It's hard to encourage and create private investment without a commitment to and recurring evidence of public investment and reinvestment. Things like roads, underground utilities, fire stations, parks. So we really believe, and I will be remarkably surprised if it doesn't happen, that after $7.5 million goes into completely rebuild Central Avenue, you're going to see a dramatic amount of private investment that starts popping up all along there. Because it just naturally happens. When you see public reinvestment, private reinvestment almost automatically happens alongside, being refocused. Only do that which we must do. And a government, oftentimes, what we do is we must do it. For instance, law enforcement. If we don't do it, no one else is going to do it. However, there are other things that maybe we don't have to do. For instance, maybe trash collection. The private sector can do trash collection, even though a lot of public sector entities do it. So then the question is, are we well-suited to do it? And then, of course, do we have the resources to do it? So if we click on all of those, then it makes sense and we ought to be focused on it. Another thing also to keep in mind is the old saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." We got enough problems worrying about the things that are broken. We probably shouldn't be working on the things that aren't broke. Again, quality over quantity and prioritize, prioritize, prioritize. If you have scarce resources, it becomes critical to prioritize. And finally, reimagine. To reimagine is what we're doing today and tomorrow, to reflect and then based upon that reflection, to revise. The willingness to pivot, adapt, acknowledge, and remain flexible to altered or changing circumstances. To recognize the one absolute with every single project is it will change, oftentimes multiple times along the way. So the one thing that I have learned over 30-some-odd years in government is every single big-scale, major project I've ever been involved with, the one absolute is it changes. It changes along the way, probably multiple times. And in government, as we started out talking today, in a volatile, ever-changing world, the greatest skill set that we ought to have is the ability to adapt and remain flexible and to alter and to adapt to changing circumstances. So that's just a quick introduction to start out into strategic planning and a thought process to think about as we start thinking about all the other things that we're doing. So last year, we spent probably a good bit of time, for the folks that were here, dealing with the traditional stuff that you oftentimes do in these strategic planning sessions, and that is the vision, the mission, the values, the core values, that type of a thing. And I think you could actually spend multiple days doing that. A lot of organizations do. We've chosen not to spend a lot of time on that because we have some basics for those. And I think when you spend all your time on that, we don't get the chance to really get to some of those critical issues that are sort of gnawing at the community that are important, that we need to attack, that you all want to talk about. So we're going to give this relatively small effort, but we're going to go back and look at just kind of what we did last year and then talk about what was accomplished after what we talked about last year. And then obviously, kind of lead into what we hope to do this year, which is, you know, the analogy to sort of the airport, still on the runway. What do we haven't taken off yet? What's hoping to move, but it hasn't happened? So the vision that we had established and looked at last year, just to go over it, was that Middletown, a place where our citizens feel safe, prosperous, and fulfilled. And that really looks at our. It's important because it's embracing and inclusive. Citizens, those are comprehensive statements. It's not just residents. Feel becomes beyond objective. It's the reality to emotional buy-in. Safe, everybody wants to feel safe. It's a commitment to that high-quality public safety service. Prosperous, it's a proactive sense of community and economic development. And fulfilled is that commitment to amenities and features that support high quality of life. So vision is supposed to be aspirational. It's supposed to be brief. It's supposed to give a very high-level sense of, as a community, what do we think we ought to be? The mission, under that vision, we will make Middletown a desired place to live, work, and visit by providing in an equitable, cost-effective, and sustainable manner a prioritized complement of public services which foster a safe, healthy, prosperous, and fulfilled community. We will collaborate with our citizens to collectively achieve our vision and mission. And then the various values that went along with that, that then flowed from that vision and the mission. Integrity. Integrity promotes trust. Trust promotes success. And we will be truthful, honest, and fair as we strive for the highest standards of performance in the workplace. Service as number two. Our product is service. And that's very true, obviously, of government. That's really what we produce. We are a service provider. Our customers are our friends and neighbors in the Middletown community. We will take personal responsibility for resolving problems. We will strive to do more than is expected. People. People are the heart and purpose of everything we do. We will listen to and consider the ideas and concerns of our citizens and our colleagues. We will treat all people with respect and dignity. Continuing on the values, fiscal accountability. We are stewards of a high trust. The money we use to provide public services will be spent responsibly and effectively. And finally, collaboration. We must collaborate and think win-win. In today's world, more can be accomplished through cooperation than competition. We must have teams and partners to become the best. We must be problem solvers. And I think, again, with our limited resources, collaboration becomes that much more important because through partnerships, we extend our ability to leverage other people's resources and other people's skill sets and support. So the things that we worked on last year and talked about and actually brought forth in our strategic planning session, first was reorganization. And if you recall, Chief Burke talked about a reorganization in his police department. And that came forward during the course of the year. And that has Chief Burke been largely fulfilled or at least well on its way? How would you characterize that? And this was first presented at that strategic session. And then, of course, it was well-received and the chief began implementing it. And now through the course of the year, I think much of it is in place or soon to be completed.
Yeah, so last year, I presented the COP, Community Order in Policing, which you guys know the results of that. They've been working with the homeless. One city, they're building those relationships. So that has gone outstanding. We also implemented a traffic officer for the first time. Actually, a traffic officer assigned to just traffic. My goal was to get another one from the courts, which they said they would fund as long as we can find applicants. But that traffic officer is averaging about 120 tickets a month. So that alone has paid for the position of a new officer. She is doing way above we ever thought. So she's handling junk motor vehicles. She's handling school zones, and she's having a lot of traffic issues throughout the city. Plus, they're doing constant studies. So that was two of the things that we wanted to do. And then I also, this year, a couple of weeks ago, was able to bring back a lieutenant into the ranks. So I was able to do that. Now, he's only been there for about a week and a half, but so far, that's going outstanding. So the vision we had, it's been in place. It's going outstanding. We just hope to build on that here in the next couple of years. Yeah. Yes. Well, that's what we do. So what happens is the city supplements the courts. But anything we give them above what is normal, then we would take, the city would take that back, and then we could fund that officer with those funds. So I've already talked to Steve Longworth about that. And, you know, we have some younger officers. Obviously, our department's doing a transition. We get some younger. So we have some patrol officers that are writing about 100 tickets. So the courts went from, you know, probably 100 tickets a month to 500 tickets a month. But with that, though, it's causing some other issues, which we'll talk about later. With that, obviously, there's more warrants. People don't pay their fines, so we have an increase in warrants. Those have to be inputted leads. So there's some other issues that come with that. But overall, we're trying to keep Middletown a safer place. And that just steps towards it with COP and with the traffic officer.
Chief, what do you think the potential timeline could be on adding that second?
Steve's ready to do it. The courts are ready to do it. I think the issue right now is just getting, we have a test coming up March 26th.
Okay.
So the process is long. Everybody knows you have to take a written test in physical fitness. Then you have a panel interview. And then you have to take, obviously, a polygraph. And you have to do a background check. So it's a very lengthy process. We try to speed it up as quick as we can. I went upstairs today. We have five live applicants already. So, but March 26th is our test for patrol. Last time, we had 13, two failed. So we ended up with only 11. Went through the process. So, but we have some other things in work. So I've been working with Susan Cohen on a couple of corrections officers that have worked for the city. They want to be officers. So we're looking at some different options on actually, you know, targeting certain individuals to become officers that have proven to be good employees. So I can't really say, based on the test, once civil service approves it. We're hoping May, 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 June, we're hoping to get that second officer. And then we would obviously work, one traffic officer would work like at 6:30 to 2:30, hit the school zone in the morning. And then the other officer would work like at 10:06 or 11:07. So we split the time up so we have more coverage for traffic throughout the day. She's just nervous. She needs to know when to slow down. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Chief. We also, for the first time at our session last year, brought forward a city-wide reorganization. And that involved creating an assistant city manager, which Susan Cohen wound up being promoted to into that position. It involved developing, creating a Development Services Department, sort of a one-stop shop for all things associated with building and development, and then moving the code enforcement to Development Services as well. And then also creating a position for a city planner for the first time. And then most recently, they just have hired that city planner. We now have got the full complement of the code enforcement in place. Ashley, you want to give us just a brief update, kind of how that's worked out, that code enforcement, how it's going now? Yeah, no, you can just come up, just a second.
Good evening. Like Jim mentioned, in September of last year, we did bring up the code enforcement team to Development Services. So as you mentioned, five inspectors, five areas. So what that goal is, is proactive rather than reactive enforcement. So that also encompasses creating relationships with people, you know, are, and rather than getting five orders from five different inspectors, they work with one. So it's a better relationship between the public and the city. Also, it goes for more effective and for compliance effort. So, I mean, that's really what that goal was, and that's what we've done. It's been running really well. We had a historic property specialist, Edna Curzo, with the introduction of James, as he mentioned, with the city planner. We now have five. So Edna is now in a quadrant, and we now have James overseeing the Historic Commission in all historic things. So it really just puts everyone back on the tree, getting compliance. So anyone have any questions for me?
Is there a map of the areas?
Oh, absolutely. We'll get that to council.
Yeah, I'd just be curious, and then just to kind of see as far as statistics go in certain areas where we're seeing more code violations or not, just from us.
We can absolutely run those reports and get those to council.
They're out there doing, I have two rentals in the last like a month that I've received letters at my house because they're parking in their yards. So they're doing the job, so.
Thank you.
So kudos to Ashley. She's really got that department kind of exactly where we hoped it would be. So don't plan any reorganization this year. You know, that's not on the schedule. We feel like we were able to bring it forth last year. We implemented it. It's in place. Feel good about it. So moving on. Capital reinvestment, we brought up at last session last year, the concept of a policy that said, what do you think about if the city finds itself in post-audit circumstance where we have greater than 20% in our undesignated general fund balance? That is 20% compared to the last year's budget expenditures. If it's above that, consider it surplus and then use those dollars in that next year for the highest priority capital needs. And then we brought that forward in mid-year. You all approved it as a city council, and that is our policy. So one of the big things we'll be talking about here at this session, and I think we're doing that tomorrow, is we, because that policy's in place, because we've performed well financially, and we do expect a fairly substantial amount above 20%. and we do expect a fairly substantial amount above 20%, we want to take you through a process that says, how do you want to spend those dollars? Because there will be a surplus. There are high priority capital needs. And what would you like to do with it? So we'll be talking about that in some depth yet tomorrow and going through it. So, again, that came as a result of last year. Put that in place. And now, as a result, we have a means by which to hopefully do quite a number of important high priorities capital needs. We also talked about developing a long-term capital improvement program. You know, a 10-year capital improvement program that is updated every year. And I can tell you, we're not as far along on that as we had hoped to be. We thought it would have been done. But I can also tell you, and we'll talk more about that, is it's been hard, you know, keeping staff in the number of positions. For instance, we haven't been able to find a city engineer for a very long time. And it's a city engineer that would have been working a lot on this. We have gotten some work done. I would say it's not fully done. But we do have a number of component parts of it and certainly enough of it to be able to talk about our capital reinvestment tomorrow. We also talked about housing in Infield, and that's an ongoing issue that we'll talk more about today. But at the same time, at that time, a very big important issue was doing the demolition Lincoln School. So as you know, it probably took longer than we had hoped. One of the things there was the, what do we call it? Section 106? Section 106 process, you have to go through when it's a historical designation. We got through that. Were able to catalog and characterize various historic elements of it. But then that project was completed. It is now graded flat and available for redevelopment, which is a nice movement. We talked further about the idea of taking individual lots that used to hold homes in older neighborhoods, getting them back out and available to individual builders to build new single-family homes again. And we got a program, another acronym, that we're going to call that HOME. We're going to talk to you about in greater depth as we go along. But that is a project that came out of, again, those discussions and not this topic that we did last year. And then capital planning. We had a lot of discussion on two major capital components of our public safety system. And that is, of course, our fire stations. And throughout the year, we had a lot of discussion on that. That turned into a decision of city council to put forth a levy in May, coming up, May 3rd, on the general election, not general, but the primary election in May, asking the public if they are willing to impose a 1 mil property tax levy for a period of not too soon, 25 years. Basically, an extension of what had been in place, the 1 mil levy for the senior center that serves, that would fund $16.8 million to rebuild and relocate four brand-new fire stations.
At this point in time, everything is set in place for that project. The election will occur in May. If that election is successful, then I believe the fire department is ready to go, literally, with an RFP for design services almost the next day, and they'll move forward rapidly. Because obviously, we're concerned about interest rates. We're concerned about construction costs. And we'll see where that goes. Chief, did you have any further comments just about on that?
The Fire Station Levy Committee met as recently. It's Tuesday. They will start kicking it into high gear March 1st. And over the next two months, we'll start seeing a lot of things from the Fire Station Levy Committee, especially beginning March 26th, which will have the Fire Station open house again. And then they will hit the ground running, especially in April, canvassing neighborhoods, encouraging the houses vote from the Fire Station Levy Committee.
And of course, as a city, all we can do is educate. We can advocate, but we're trying the best that we can to educate whenever possible. We did do a video, we actually did two videos. One just on need for these facilities. And the second video was on the financing mechanism, kind of. And I think those are both out there. They're on the website. They're available to the committee. It's really about education. But they'll, they can use them, you know, further if they want to advocate, but that's up to them. But obviously, we're certainly hoping that that happens. If it doesn't, we're going to have to revisit, you know, how in fact we would have to finance those fire stations. Because that need is there. There's no question about that. We're hoping that this is the financing mechanism. The second thing we discussed, which hasn't moved nearly as far along, is the need to rebuild, replace the jail and the courts. And while we don't have any specific financing mechanism in place, we have had some movement recently that we're kind of pleased with, and that is House Bill 101. House Bill 101 is the bill that would serve to finance county jails on a regular basis based on need. But we, through lobbyists, have been able to get the sponsor of the bill to change or amend it to include municipal jails. So because there are only four municipal jails in the state of Ohio, it's a very small number compared to county jails. And in most cases, they're relatively small. Our jail is the biggest among those four. It wasn't as big a political lift to get that changed because it's not going to take that much of funding when you think of it in comparison to all of those county jails. So that's the approach we're taking. We're going to lobby really hard and hopefully we can have some success in getting House Bill 101 approved. If it is, then it would become a matter of getting in the line. And to the extent that our need was judged to be higher than some others, then we could be in line for funding. So, Chief Burke, I know we've been trying every possible way to come up with means that were as least burdensome as possible to the community, and that certainly is one of them. So we're hoping we have some success with that. Now, do you want to hand to that?
Yeah, just trying to find the funding. So if they open that up to cities, I think we have a pretty good shot.
The other thing we talked about last year, and again, only because we want to lessen the burden as much as possible on this community, is is there an appetite to build the facility larger than is necessary for our needs in order to rent some of those spaces, assuming the rentals would be greater than the cost to do it? So for instance, if the cost of housing a prisoner was, take it number $79 a night, and the federal marshals would pay us $125 a night, then that might be another means to, in effect, subsidize the city's cost and allow less burden on the city taxpayer and still, you know, allow the facility to be built. So another way for looking at it.
Jim, did you, I think maybe it was said both ways. Did you say it has been changed to include municipalities? Because at first you said that and then you said it's not yet.
No, the sponsor did. They were willing, they amended it to add it or add the municipal in. But obviously, the bill hasn't been passed.
Sure.
Yeah.
But it has been amended already?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So now we have to advocate that somehow it gets approved even it's amended state.
How they explained it to us is it doesn't say you can't, and it doesn't say you can't. So that was like kind of the opening. It wasn't saying, it wasn't saying no municipal or jails, but it didn't say it could. So that was how we got it in.
Now, some of the things that we haven't moved as far along on, and I mentioned the long-term CIP, and there's been quite a bit of work on it, but not to the sense that we can say, hey, I can produce it in a book form. You could page through it and here's all, but it's still certainly something we're working on. Jail and the courts, we just kind of went over that, kind of where we are. Grades, fireworks and events, we're going to talk more about that when we have a session with you coming up. Approach to small business assistance. This is a tough area, and Chrishell's going to talk to you about this tomorrow at lunch. And she's going to ask you a lot of questions. Really, it's about what kind of policy do you really want to pursue? Because there's lots of different ways to look at, how should we? Should we, period, buy small business assistance? And when we do, you know, what are the criteria? What are the parameters? Where? What level of risk? What, that stuff? What circumstance? What are we funding? What aren't we funding? So you'll talk about that more. And then we also had the presentation last year, a year ago, for the first time on Project Celluloid, the riverfront redevelopment. So I think we're all familiar kind of where that stands. And, you know, there's further discussions and things to do when it comes to riverfront redevelopment.
Jim, are you saying Project Celluloid is still on the runway?
Well, riverfront redevelopment. I have the idea that Celluloid was introduced last year as a way to do riverfront redevelopment. It didn't happen. But in a sense, what's still on the runway is some ability to redevelop our riverfront. With that, before we go on to, I think we're pretty much on track. We did pretty well. Before we go on to organizational planning issues, anything related to kind of where we were last year, what we did, our update on that? Any issues related to that? Any comments, thoughts? Again, I think it shows just how valuable these sessions are. Because I mean, I don't, I don't know that everybody can always say that, you know, we were able to accomplish quite a number of pretty substantial things that came strictly out of this session that then allowed us to bring those things forward and remove them forward. So maybe we'll not, success will have a similar experience this year. Okay, well, we'll just move right along then. One of the biggest things we have been facing, and it's no secret, and if you work in an organization anywhere, I think you're facing this. And it's, it's a bit of a product of the pandemic. It's a bit of the product of the economy. It's a bit of a product of changing demographics. It's very hard to recruit and retain employees. It's hard to maintain morale. It is hard, again, in an organization with scarce resources, to be competitive when it comes to both compensation and benefits. We are not going to tell anybody or claim that we're competitive. We aren't. We know that. That's just basic data. And that, you know, it's interesting. I mean, we sit down with collective bargaining organizations, and usually we sit down and the first thing we do is agree on everything at the end. Because yes, we're not competitive. We're understaffed and we're undercompensated. Okay, how do we fix it? That's the biggest problem. How do we fix it? So, this issue of recruitment and retention, it is a concern for this organization. To say it isn't, I would be completely disingenuous. But if it gives us any solace at all, it is a national trend. Inflation, we talked about that earlier, is also inflation of wage increases. So if we are now uncompetitive, we're probably going to struggle to even remain as competitive as we were because there has been a real significant pressure on inflation for wage increases. And you're starting to see that more and more. So, we've started to work to get as creative as we can be. We introduced for the first time this last year, the idea of hiring bonuses. So, Chief Burke, who has really had difficulty trying to find corrections officers, dispatchers, dispatchers particularly, have introduced sign-on bonuses as well as retention bonuses. Chief, what were those numbers? You know, remind us what that was?
$1,500 for a sign-on bonus. We get half after six months and the other after one year. And then we did a $2,500 bonus for employees. They have to have a one-year commitment on top of that. It's just, it's our recruiting, so.
So, you know, and I think there's a really important concept there is, we know that we have to find people and get them interested by giving them signing bonus. But it's really awful when you tell somebody, hey, you're brand-new and we're going to pay you to come here, but somebody's been sitting there a long time and they're not going to get anything. So we acknowledge the fact that there needs to be the retention bonus at the same time. So that's why the two came together. But it's still hard. And one of the things that we find, and we may discuss this more, is particularly with dispatchers and corrections officers, is I think we have sort of disproportionately over time kept those wages low because as you would discuss those two particular things, there was always a discussion is, do you need to do that at all? Because someone would say, hey, why do you have the municipal jail? And, you know, before we start talking about dramatically increasing the cost of corrections officers, should we have this discussion again about not having jail and moving them to the county? And then you get into that. Or dispatchers. Obviously, a lot of people are going to a county or a refill dispatch. So you get into that thought and then that becomes that. So I think that's part and parcel of the fact that we have them, but they're not particularly well compensated. And we're really seeing the negative effects of that now because it's almost impossible for the chief to keep, you know, fully staffed in those two areas. But I would say that it's not the only two areas as well because, Chief Ollie, just your experience recently with trying to find firefighters compared to what you used to see, give us a little color, a little concept, a little thought of where you are.
It's getting very tough, very frustrating. For example, when we used to have three, and Councilman Meters Paul can tell you, you used to have 300, 400 people come through your test. Now you're lucky, as Chief Burke said, that you have 20, 25 people. And through the process, half of those are cut out. It's tough. And then this long-going situation we're dealing with, we'll probably want to lose several people in the next month because communities like Sharonville, Miami Valley Fire District, Miami's Berg area, Fairfield, they're paying their people $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 more than, than our people. And then it's, it's just impossible to compete with that.
Yeah, I think when, when I took the test, Dave probably, too, I think there were 380 people took the test and they hired four of us. And so it's dramatically, I know they recruit hard and they send people to colleges and trade schools and the high schools, but you're right. I mean, when we pay that, and there's nothing really we can do as far as that goes. But we used to be able to steal other officers from other agencies. But now we can't do that because, yeah.
People would leave Tattering, Fairfield, and come to Middletown because we were one of the premier hired police departments and fire department, and you had the action.
I think the key is retaining, is retention's more important than recruitment. I really think that, retaining who you have, because that's, that's who we're losing. I know, you know, Public Works has lost people, police, fire, owners. But the thing is, is we just have to, we have to retain what we have first before we recruit.
I agree.
That's a problem. So, yeah, got to make it worth a while to stay. Because word gets out.
Oh, yeah.
And it's out.
Well, that being said, too, I'm curious, how is, how is the bonus program working? And how many of those have we given out for?
Chief Burke, you have a problem?
Yeah, we gave all the employees. We've had two employees resign, and it was just four hours. They went to a job, they paid more money, and they worked Monday through Friday, eight to four weekends off. That's the biggest hurdle we're having with police, at least police department, is we can't find people that want to work 3:11 to midnight, so they want to work Monday through Friday with weekends off. So we had two had to pay back the bonus. And then we have hired one. We have another, we have a test actually for dispatch and corrections tomorrow. So we have five dispatcher candidates and four corrections officer candidates. But like Paul said, it's just difficult to compete when other dispatch centers are paying $5, $7 more an hour. Just makes it difficult to compete.
So it's something, but it's not necessarily enough.
Yeah. And, you know, the dispatchers left, you know, they went out, they had kids, and they want that more steady Monday through Friday weekend. You know, and if you're going somewhere for more money with weekends off, no holidays, no nights, no being held from midnights, it's a factor. So, we're doing everything we can. HR's doing a great job. We're getting the information out there. It's just trying to find somebody to keep this line of work now is difficult.
And the concept of corrections officer to police academy has not, have you had any of those?
We're working on that right now. I, I have a couple of candidates back there. And Jim, I think is going to get into that next.
Okay.
Yeah, Chief, did you want to comment on that next bullet, which is working to send corrections officers to part-time police departments?
Sure, you want me to come up there?
Yeah.
While we're walking up here, I was just thinking, this is one of the ideas that you brought to the table, but also Chief Ollie's asked about it as well. It's the idea of could we open up our pool to help send some people that we think would be good candidates, but they don't have the educational background and other ways that we can look at, I won't say push assistance, but for lack of a better term, sending people to these schools to be qualified. And particularly the idea that they brought to the table that we're going to try a pilot program of is employees that we have that are working corrections, maybe trying to give them a career path and that they want to go into being a patrol officer. And we have a background that they're a really good employee, making, helping them make that transition and then keeping that good employee. If you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, like Meters Paul said, you know, keeping the employees we have. So, obviously, we have corrections and dispatch. So we have some good personnel back there. We had an individual, Nathan Morgan, who went to the OSP Academy. He had an unfortunate medical incident. He had to get some surgery. But he's been a great employee for a couple of years, you know, and we want to reward him for that. So I presented to Susan and Jim to say, hey, instead of sending him to OSP where you have to go away for four months, you're staying there, you don't get to come home until Friday night. I said, hey, Butler Tech has a part-time academy. Could we possibly pay for the academy? And then that way, we can still utilize him in the corrections position until he's done with the part-time academy. And then when he's done, if we have a vacancy, we promote him. And then when he's done, if we have a vacancy, we promote him to the patrol officer. So we get used for him while he's working corrections, plus he's going to the academy. And when he completes the academy, we can promote him to patrol officer. So it's kind of a win-win for us. We get a good employee, he's still working the jail, so then I don't have to go out and find another corrections officer. And then on top of that, we know he's a good employee, so then when he transitions to patrol, he knows the people, he knows the codes, he knows the officer. So then again, it's an easy transition to patrol. So this is something we're trying, because we have some younger corrections officers. We've got a couple eighteen-year-olds, they want to follow the same path. So this gives us an option, we can also do it for dispatch. So I talked to Susan and Jim, we're looking at putting like recruitment for the next year, if this works out, that we have that little cap of money to send one person to the academy like this. And then I think it's a benefit for everybody, it's a benefit to the employee, it's a benefit to the department and the community.
I think this is really cool, just by the way. I think it's very creative, and it's a great way to look at your existing staff and try to really build them up and lift them up inside the organization. I think that's great. I was curious, is this something that is a best practice in other communities? Or is this something that you sort of saw a connection and felt like maybe it could work?
Well, we started the OSP Academy, actually, former Chief Mears Paul had a great candidate at college that his daughter played soccer with. And we had OSP Academy, which is free for any department of Ohio. We sent her to that academy. She did outstanding, she graduated. So we were using OSP as a start point. But this is something new by, you know, if we have an employee working dispatch or the jail, we can keep them working with us, we can still pay them, but we're giving them the benefit. And we'll cover the cost of the academy for you. If, you know, you sign that you're going to be with us for a couple years, which they want to stay in Middletown, that's where they're working, that's what they're familiar with. So this is kind of something new. Other departments don't have the ability, because most departments don't have jail. Most people, you know, regionalization for dispatch is becoming popular. And a lot of people that get into dispatch aren't really interested in becoming a patrol officer. So by using the jail and hiring these eighteen, nineteen-year-old kids that eventually want to get there, I think it's just a stepping stone, and we're targeting certain individuals, so I think it's a good thing.
That seems like a great resource, that just that we have Butler Tech so close, and they have that program. It's just meant to be.
We got a couple more officers now that are assigned to be instructors there too. So again, we're building those relationships, just not here, but everywhere.
This might be a Dave and Susan question, but you know, one thing that happens in public safety, you know, is we don't have laterals, we're full-blown laterals. And really, when you come from another department, you have to start at the bottom. So you start at the bottom, A, on vacation, bottom everything, that's why people don't do that. A lot of agencies have laterals where if you have eight years on, you can transfer, and that eight years counts for your pay and your benefits and everything else. I know the unions have kind of proposed that here at Middletown years ago because they didn't want somebody coming from another department being over them when it comes to seniority. But is that something that's even considered, or your opinions on that?
Well, we did have an individual come from Memphis, and then we also had one from Chuck from Monroe. And we were able to, I was able to talk to Susan and to Jim, and I was able to bump their salary up. So they weren't taking a pay cut. And they came here because they worked around us, or the Memphis officer had family in the area. So we are kind of doing like laterals, but we're not actually calling it laterals. So if somebody comes from another department, I have the ability to go to them and say, hey, look, I want to start him here, he has experience, he's been an officer for three to five years, we need him, he's a little bit older. So, you know, they give me the ability to do that.
That's great.
I was also going to say, I think you hit right on the head. The problem with that traditional one has been the union concerned that they don't want somebody to come in higher than them. Within our benefits ordinance, Jim, have we got plenty of authorized that higher starting salary and things at Dave's request. And each time we've had this come up, we've gone to the union and said, we have a candidate with X qualifications, this is what we'd like to do to try and promote that really cooperative environment and say, we understand this is a concern, but we want to explain to you why we want to make this decision, and hopefully to get their buy-in on that front end. They have been, in my experience, not willing to give a wholesale, you know, this is okay. But has been really good about, you know, when we have a candidate, we think that's appropriate, to have that conversation.
That's great.
Yeah, so they, and again, you know, part of the union, Sergeant Dalsen at Halyon's doing outstanding job recruitment. They go everywhere, career centers, departments, you know, Warren County Career, they go all over, academies. They're everywhere, and our HR department's been outstanding in spreading the word out there. We're reaching further states, we're doing everything we can. So it's just, right now, the climate, so this is difficult.
Well, I think for me, two things. First is, so my grandpa worked in City Garage, and he ended up retiring as a firefighter for Middletown. They always saw him as a good employee, and it like changed his family's life. I mean, me, growing up, without him and that opportunity with Middletown, I mean, who knows where I would be today? So it's, they just saw him as a good employee, rose into the ranks like this program does. And then second thing, my best friend's a state patrolman, and for Butler County, he hasn't had a day off in like a month. And it's, it's not just a Middletown thing, it's everywhere. They don't have enough people, they didn't have enough people for an academy here recently. So just nobody is applying anywhere, it's not just us, it's just...
Yeah, and I fear the day when you get to a point where nobody wants to be police. But what happens when you don't have officers or, you know, firemen? What happens when you get to that point? And we're close, I mean, like Mears Paul said, when I took the test, we had three hundred and fifty people, you know. We had an ungodly amount of people. I had thirteen people take the patrol test last night. And it's not just us, I mean, Warren County had nine. So, and they paid a lot more than us. So I just think people don't want to get in this line of work. And again, a lot of people want to work this Monday through Friday days and go home and have their, they enjoy that time off more. When I started, I couldn't get enough, I wanted to be here twenty-four-seven, you know. So it's just different.
Have we looked at increasing the minimum entry age?
We're in the, increasing it?
Yeah.
Yes, we've actually looked at that, that's going to be...
By increasing, I mean on the back, like, except you're a veteran candidate.
We've...
Yeah.
Yeah. So you've got to be twenty-one to be an officer. But we have, right now, the cutoff's thirty-five. We've looked with civil service, I talked to them, we're HR, we're actually in contract negotiations right now. That's on the table, I would like to increase it to at least forty. Five years, I think, is good. I think when you get past that, this is a young man's game. I think finding, you know, someone thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, we can do that. But once you get over that forty mark, we've had some issues where the officer's injured more than he's at work. So, but yeah, we've looking at expanding it five years.
I specifically think we're like military veterans, we're totally negating the opportunity to employ them when they may be very, very employed.
Yeah, so that's why we're looking at expanding it about five years. That's, we've taken that to civil service with HR, we're looking at expanding it for, we've had a couple thirty-seven-year-olds that were probably in way better shape than all our officers that we've missed because of that age requirement. But we go by the ORC, that's where that was set. So I had to take it to civil service, been working with HR and the unions on expanding that. And they're for it, they want to expand it.
And just thinking outside the boxes, the things that we can offer employees that maybe isn't bonuses or one-time money, but have we considered, we talk about quality of life, and people are trying to balance. And what I understand is one of the big issues right now is childcare, and that's why our workforce is dwindling because the childcare is not available places. Is that something in any fashion the city could either help to supplement or, you know, add as a benefit for city employees that would make us more competitive? I highly doubt anyone else is doing it, I'm sure it's not, it's not free. I'm just trying to think outside the box that might, you know, create, fill a need that...
I think you bring up a good point, and that is, we have to get a lot more creative in the future. Because I think employees across the whole spectrum are looking for different things, they want different things, and we have to meet their needs too. So that's a huge issue. Yeah, you haven't seen a lot of places do it, a lot of people will have to start recognizing things like that. So in this next bullet point, I started to think about the idea of more creative benefits. So, you know, can we do more health kind of stuff, incentive, place assistance programs, whatever? But you bring up a good point, that more creativity in terms of the kind of things that we like.
I think as a nation, we're seeing a lot of spouses now staying at home because the childcare isn't available. And so we're missing a workforce that wasn't a workforce before, or would have been. But, and they, they are now just taking care of a job that isn't available to them otherwise.
You're right, quality childcare can be very expensive. Sometimes it almost pays for that individual to stay home as opposed to take that lower-level, lower-wage job and kind of...
I would throw out an eternity leave too, that's something that a lot of companies have gone to just to, as an added benefit.
We actually, we do have that.
Oh, we get, oh, sorry.
We're one of the only, well, one of the only municipalities that... See, I never think I need a microphone, I keep forgetting that when we keep recording. We actually, I wanted to say, municipalities actually does pass pay leave for adoption as well as maternity and parental leave. And I think that has been really well received by those that have used it.
Yeah.
To the mayor's point about childcare, I'm not looking at that specifically, but I will say, one of the bullet points on that was a new employee assistance program, which, if you're not familiar with it, is a resource that we provide to employees to help them with life concerns. And that can be anything from people's substance abuse concerns, mental health, trouble access and healthcare, mental health services. And we didn't feel like we were getting the right services we needed, and went out to bid last year, and just got a new employee assistance program this year. And one of the things I actually loved about this new program is that they have a very robust work-life balance program, which means that they provide a lot of services to help employees address some of those outside-of-the-box concerns. And the example they actually gave us is if you're looking for healthcare, or for childcare, they have a service where you can call and say, I have a child this age and I live in this area. And they will, the employee assistance program will actually call around the childcares that are rated a particular way in the area. So that instead of you having to take your time to vet a hundred different places, you get a pre-vetted list. It's not paying for it, but it's starting to take a step to say, we understand you have all of these obligations outside of the office, and is there something that we can do to help ease some of those concerns? And I think that's something that we're pushing out this per quarter, and hopefully will be well-received to try and help with some of those issues. That also includes an employee assistance program that is dedicated and specified for first responders. So our folks that are actually going out on scenes deal with so many other issues in response to seeing things that we would never want to see, but also some of the concerns they deal with. And the idea was to try and add this extra benefit that's focused just on first responders so that they get some of the services and support that they need that they may not be comfortable seeking without having a program that was really specified towards their needs.
Another benefit we could consider is adding additional paid leave days. And it's not as one-for-one, it won't necessarily cost us as much, except of course, policeable because they need to be backfilled. Which is some of the things that we can maybe consider, that, but that would maybe be such a financial burden in some cases, but a benefit in recruiting.
Just a thought, and we've talked about it many times. You know, being able to keep the employees at work here to live in town. You know, and as we talked to, I don't know, Ryan or Fisher, or we're talking about some of these infill spots or mail. If whenever we're talking to these home builders, if we have the opportunity to say, hey, is there anything creative that, hey, when we hire a new employee, they get a small discount on their home? Or, you know, there's an interest, they work with a bank, and there's a special interest rate? Or just leveraging their thoughts, and, you know, maybe, Zach, maybe you have some thoughts on this? I just don't know that they would want to be creative and want to have those type of employees that live in town and work in town and...
Or maybe covering some moving costs, if they were willing to move to Middletown, maybe something like that.
Well, I personally think that the right way to do that, you guys could make great points. First off, I think a builder is all about the numbers. That's, you got to think, any large-scale builder, they're not worried about a community, they're worried about an organization, and the people that are going to have a board, that's what they have to answer to. So if you're working with a small builder, that might be an option, unlike the infill lots. I think to your point, Monica, I don't know if moving costs would be the way to do it, but maybe like if you move to town and stay here, we give you an upfront grant from the city. And if you're here for five years, almost like the NHS, the neighborhood housing, the presentation you had, if we could do something like that, where if you come here, and you work here, and you stay here, which means you're going to spend all your dollars here, then maybe there's a possibility for that. I think that'd be the right way to go about that, and I wouldn't be opposed to that personally.
And certainly, some cities have done that, you know, the desire to have people live in their community to truly actually create grants subsidies to provide funding to the employee. And it's a policy question, it's something to be, to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's reasonable.
So again, creativity is critical, as we talked about this recruitment and retention. The other thing, when we talk about where we are with compensation, I think we can pretty much make a blanket statement that says we know that for the most part, we're not competitive in the way that we provide salaries to our people. The problem is though, just how uncompetitive are we in which areas? So for us to understand that much better, what we're doing is, we've contracted to have a compensation classification studied up. And I know Susan, you're a lot closer to this than I've been. So do you want to kind of tell us what we've been doing, what we hope to accomplish with this, when it will be done? Sarah?
I'm going to stand up for a bit because my back's fixed, but not good. We will be bringing forth to you a contract on March fifteenth that we would like to enter into with the Bolton Company, which is based on the East Coast, but they have an office in the Cincinnati area, so about as close to local as we can get. This was after NRP for the services. And what they are looking at is a sixteen-week process where it does a complete independent review of all of our classifications for employees, as well as the ranges in those classifications, as well as a look at our benefits. So to be able to get information from all stakeholders, so we want to talk to council members, that want to talk to city management, that want to talk to department directors and frontline staff, to be able to compare what people are doing, and then what options are there in the market, and really give us a good working document that says, hey, for these job classifications, this is how we think your benefit package ranks amongst the community members, and where we think you could make some measured improvements. So hopefully, to give us a really good working document moving forward to try and address our concerns with the experts and be able to move forward on getting more competitive in our salary benefits.
Have we done this before? I can't ever do it in my six years.
We have not done it in my nine years that I've been here. And the last time I know that we did, we actually did it internally. And so obviously, we thought at this point that we were equipped, we wanted to go out to the experts and really get a full independent review. So I think we have done this at City Pass, but it's been at least ten years ago. So you will see that on March the fifteenth, it is in this year's budget. So we came in, I think this is the one contract we've been this year where it came in under the budgeted amount. But you will see that on March fifteenth, and we'll hope, if you have any questions about that, you can certainly raise it, and we'll get it addressed for you.
And one of the things that I have told our department heads about is, it is absolutely critical that they get good, accurate information. Because if they are going to be accurate on determining the true value of a particular job classification, they have to fully, completely understand all the duties of that classification. What are the requirements, what are the stresses, what are the things that person has to do? Don't forget any of them. Because if you don't classify it fully, then you might be leaving something out and you're not making as competitive as you should be. So that becomes an important issue. So then, of course, once we do have this done, they can, they will give us this complete analysis and matrix to say, well, in order for you to be competitive among your, you know, appropriate set of other municipalities or whatever, you know, you'll pay X, Y, Z, whatever for each classification. Then the question is for us, how close to that can we get, and in what timeframe? So sometimes you take these studies and you say, well, you know, we're a long way off. So let's have a goal of getting to sixty percent, or eighty percent, or some other percent of where they say we should, so that we know at least we're making progress. Because oftentimes, you may find, and I won't be the least bit surprised to see, that we will be way under competitive, and the cost to get us competitive, if we were to try to do it all at once, would be simply beyond our ability to do it. So you got to bite that elephant a few bites at a time, and keep trying to get it closer and closer as you move along. So of course, in some of the way we determine this, obviously, we do it through collective bargaining. So a number of our employees are subject to collective bargaining units. And we are currently negotiating with the Fraternal Order of Police, who represents sergeants, lieutenants, and patrol officers. And I feel like we've gotten really, really close. And the chief can speak to it more if you want. But I know that we've done everything in our power to make a really decent quality, sort of find the best offer.
There's a seat over here.
I'm going to stay, I'm going to hurry, public safety over here.
And I believe at least it's promising because I think they're scheduled to take a vote on it.
Yeah, so we had a change in guard. So we have Beverly Myers, she's done an outstanding job. I think we're really close, I think it's a very good offer, very good offer, probably the best I've seen in twenty-five years. So they have a meeting, they were trying to get it done this week, they have a meeting Monday. And my understanding is they're going to take it to a vote to the members in the union. And then we're hoping I have something by next week. So a lot of the things they wanted, we were able to accomplish. They were able to keep their medical caps and some other things. So I think we did an outstanding job, and this took a while because they were very high coming in, but I think it's going to... but I think it's going to go to a vote hopefully next week. They have a meeting Monday and we should know more by next week.
And as part of that last best final offer, in addition to both across-the-board wage increases free for three years and a lump sum bonus payments free for three years, we also offered an amount of premium pay equal to what was just awarded to the AFSC folks, the $2,496. So once that got established for ASME and ACR, we felt that that was a good example. It was a good way to continue. So that has been offered as well to FOP. So we're hoping to accept that and that becomes part of it. And then in turn, we'd like to be able to then extend that to the remainder of the employees. But by starting with the collective bargaining units, we felt that that was a good way to do it. So with regard to that premium pay and the way that the American Rescue Plan Act talks about it, they define within there as eligible workers. And eligible workers are workers needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential critical infrastructure sectors and additional sectors as each governor of a state or territory or each tribal government may designate as critical to protect the health and wellbeing of residents of their state, territory, and tribal government. Very, very broad. So for the most part, we think just about anybody and everybody that works for the government could ultimately fall into those categories of what is eligible to the fullest extent possible. We hope that we can extend it to as many as possible. Our vote also recognizes premium pay to be an amount up to, and we talked about this before, $13 per hour. It's the maximum. In addition to wages that that worker would otherwise receive, and you can't pay any worker more than $25,000. So hence the calculation of $13 per hour. The $2,496 is, I forget exactly, it's something on the order of 172 hours and $13 an hour. So kind of reverse engineering. But as I said, we had entered an agreement with the ASME, representing the Public Works and Transit employees, and they were receiving the $2,496. So that is where that number came from and the hope was. And it can be extended to others and it has since been extended as an offer to the FOP. So with regard to our budget for that, that $2,496, if we extended that to all 380 of our employees, the total cost would be $948,000. And we have a little extra zero on there. I'm sorry about that, shouldn't have proofread that. 480, 948, 480, not 4,800. So our ARPO budget as it stands has $600,454. The remaining balance, if we were to choose to use it and expend it, would be 348, 480. And that would be allocated from our general capital reserves. So again, our hope is acknowledging the fact that not only have we been through a pandemic for two years and we really haven't compensated our folks nearly as well as we can, we really love to be able to get at least this premium pay off to people as soon as possible. So that is our goal and our hope. Now, long-term staffing goals. I think we started out saying we will acknowledge again and there's no question about it, we are short-staffed. But knowing that it is the time to plan on how to get more or get back to more appropriate staff counts. So really it becomes prioritization for future growth. So where is the most critical need? And there's no question that we are very understaffed in public safety. Any comparison that we could make to any other city across the country, we're much, much fewer in terms of total numbers. But at the same time, our entire organization really speaks to that. And we've got a few numbers here recently that our HR just went out to some of our other local communities. City of Hamilton has a population of 62,182 people. Their active employees are 653. So that's one employee for every 95 residents. City of Monroe has a population of 15,400 with 143 full-time employees. That's one employee for every 107 residents. Springfield, population of 58,662, 548 employees. Again, exactly equal to Monroe, one employee for every 107 residents. Middletown, we have 51,400 people and 380 employees at our most. That is one employee for every 135 residents. So you can see on most measures, we are understaffed across our entire organization. So it's no surprise. And I think I would be typically used to seeing a city of this size at this level of services, probably have 500 to 600 employees. And as I said, we have 380. And at any given time of those 380, there's typically 30 to 40 that are vacant. And some, they can see, last a lot longer than others. I'm really pleased to announce that we did find a communications manager, that was great. We have now however, found a city engineer. And how long now, Scott, have we been drawn?
Since May of last year.
Since May of last year. We're coming up on a year. And for the most part, if we wanted to hire a city engineer at a level that really needs to be in this community, we would have to pay them substantially more than we pay the director of the department. And he would be very unhappy if we did that.
I'll take the city engineer job.
I am taking the city engineer job. So in areas like that where, you know, the private sector pays so much more, I mean, there's literally nobody short of that entry-level engineer who would be willing to come here. So it's a huge problem. IT is similar. Any number of areas, you know, we lost our HR manager. I don't know how we're doing there in terms of...
The application's actually closed today, so...
So we'll see. We'll see how many come in. At higher levels, very hard to find talented skilled people. Dispatching directions, we talked about that a little bit. Very hard there because they're probably less competitive than us. Parks and recreation, we have no recreation. So, you know, at some point, if we feel like we can start adding staff, that is a brand-new service that most cities have that I think at one time we have, but at this point we have none. I mean, zero, it doesn't exist. And in fact, what passes for our parks employees are really public works employees who part of the time get to work maintaining the parks. So, you know, to say it's only in public safety, it's not. You know, we're very understaffed throughout. Nathan, how many people do we have doing all of our payroll for everybody? Is that...
One.
Yes, that's one person. God help us when that person gets ill. 380 employees, one person. So...
Jim, could I put one more stat out there just based on a meeting that I had?
Please.
We were kind of, we were talking about Butler Metro Housing Authority. Are you guys picking up microphones, stuff from around the room too?
Yeah, I don't need it. We also need this.
He says we don't need it.
You don't, okay. I just wanted to make sure that they...
No, appreciate it. So I learned a lot about Section 8 and public housing last week. I met with Butler Metro Housing Authority. But one of the, you know, first of all, let me put a misnomer out there. Middletown does not have a specific number of Section 8 vouchers. And I'm bringing this up because this gets back to income tax, right? Why are we so short-staffed on the number of staff members to citizens? Our income tax is low is one of the reasons, okay? Not everything, but it is a big one and we talk about it all the time. But I look at the numbers on the Section 8 vouchers. Now, Section 8, somebody from Florida can bring a Section 8 voucher here to Middletown as long as someone in Middletown is willing to rent that house to them and abide by the regulations, then they can use it here. So in theory, everyone from around the country could come to Middletown and rent every single house in Middletown and be have Section 8. Okay, on the same token, people who get Section 8 vouchers in Butler County could take them anywhere else and we can end up with none. So just to give that basis, it's not like we can blame the housing authority for this. But if you look at the stats, and I'm just going to look at Hamilton and Middletown, okay? Because those are the two populations that you, two of them that you referenced. One out of 74 residents in Middletown is on a Section 8 voucher. One out of 113 in Hamilton is. That's a big difference. And so we look at income tax rates and it's obviously lots of different factors going into all this. But I just thought I'd pull that out there because I've had the stats over here and it kind of plays into the picture. We'll just keep it in the back of our head. But I can get a little bit more specifics on that if anybody wants. But 692 vouchers here in Middletown and 515 in Hamilton.
I had heard some rumors sometime that Hamilton essentially forced out all the Section 8 to Middletown. Is there any, does anyone know about that?
They can't, they can't force it necessarily. That's not even a...
She's correct. Actually, when you get a voucher from Butler County, they don't have restrictions on where you can use it. That was part of the reason why we decided to invest ourselves in Middletown Housing Authorities because then those vouchers go to the county and likely that it would be spent in Middletown is lessened. We completely eliminated it, but it does lessen the chances.
Anyway, a lot bigger discussion on that one. I just wanted to put the numbers out there as well.
That makes a really good point. I mean, to acknowledge the challenges that we have. You know, when we recognize these challenges, we're more capable of taking them on, you know, head-on and figuring out how to solve these. But we have a number of challenges, there's nothing about that. Now, I think optimistically, we've been doing much better in the last number of years. There's no doubt about it. Things are looking up, things are getting much better. But we have a long way to climb in fact, because those numbers of staffing in the organization became artificially low over time because of so much financial hardship. They've been coming back. Not as fast as we'd like them to, but they've been coming back. Our income tax is coming back, it's doing better. That's why I'm giving another chance to talk about money for capital improvements. Is it where we want it to be? Absolutely not. But at least we're making this incremental improvement. So if we can continue to make incremental improvement, and that's in effect the last bullet point now, there are incremental changes spread out as recurring revenues increase. So hopefully in future budget years, as we prioritize what is the most important, you'll start to see additional staffing added. So we got this one big thing, which is retention to just pay competitively. But then at the same time, can we actually add addition to provide greater levels of service and get it back closer to what we used to be and what we need to be? So two different things, both important, but they'll take money and it's an incremental process.
Jim, just a thought on that before we move on. I don't expect an answer right now, but I would love an answer over the coming weeks and I guess staff maybe has had a chance to think about a little bit more. But on the hiring situation, I think we all understand the places that you have up there. But I've often wondered, like, are there like one or two strategically positioned hires that we could make within the organization that don't exist right now that would really help lessen the load on other staff? Like maybe it's another person in finance. Maybe it's another communications person. Maybe it's another person in HR. Like I don't know what it is because I don't live in the building every day. But I have to assume that there's departments that get backlogged because they're just missing that one other person. And if they had that one other person, you know, I don't know if it'd be a director level or a step down, but I would be open to considering that. Not that we're going to go on a hiring binge, but, you know, where do things get backlogged and would another person, you know...
Yeah, I think that's critical. When those are the kind of conversations that a department head level we have and continue to have, it's like, you know, what is causing you the biggest problem? Can that be fixed with a particular individual skillset? You know, what does that look like? So it's really good to hear that because knowing that in advance, I think, you know, I think for so long, many of these department heads who have been here a long time got so used to hearing, whether it was a past city manager or past councils or whatever, not only don't bring it forward, but we're looking for cuts, that they just got a little bit where they didn't even imagine they could bring that forward anymore. So in a way, it's really nice to hear that. And I think as we move forward, maybe it will be a little bit easier for them to actually imagine it, so...
Well, and I think to go back on that point, I feel like the city's starting to get to a point of where we're a little bit more stable financially to where we don't have to just be reactive anymore, but we can start being proactive on programs and jobs, so...
Exactly. And I think that's the good news. That's the good news, you know? And hopefully if it keeps up in that direction, then we start to make those incremental changes to the positive. Because I know some of you have been here long enough and you were part of those, "Oh my God, fire department had to cut how many employees?" Cut, real people, laid off, you know? That's hard. We're not talking about adding, we're not talking about attrition. We're talking about people's jobs that got eliminated. So, you know, I never want to go back to that.
Jim, on a note of sort of trying to find that additional help in some departments, we have utilized like paid internships in the past, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Can you...
Yes, I know that Cruchel's had some good success with that. Had some really good interns here recently. We strongly encourage others. I know other departments, I think...
ITs use Butler Tech, you don't know that?
Yeah, so anywhere we can, that's, you know, great help at a relatively small cost. So yes, we encourage that strongly and we'll continue to do that. Anything else before we move on from this whole issue of compensation, recruitment, retention, employment staffing? It's a big ugly issue. We tried to just cover it quickly. Any other thoughts or comments?
Have any of those interns ever applied for available positions inside of the city? Is that something that, I mean, when we talk about retention, is that something...
I tell you what, I know that Cruchel's had one that we'd love to keep around. So I don't know if that's a chance yet. But if he graduates in college, we'd love to see him. So yeah, the possibility sure exists. That's a great way to...
We hired an intern.
Yeah, we had an intern from Wilmington. She gets such an outstanding job. She went through the academy and we hired Kemba Williams. She's done outstanding.
Well, you know...
I think RT has also hired...
Has also hired...
I think Jesse was an intern.
Oh, maybe not. I thought it was...
So does that bring up the point of, does the city create some type of pilot program where we start going into the high school and start trying to set kids up on, to where we can start recruiting them to get into the city at 18 and 19?
Yes, we're doing that in fireworks. We're doing that in waste city.
Police and fire have started that. I think the city has had some ongoing relationships also more with Miami and Cincinnati State to try and go into their internship fairs and try and get college age, which just tends to be a little bit more... I'm not allowing them all to go up and talk. We've had some of those ongoing internships to try and get college age. I think we've had a lot of success with that. Scott, you have something out there?
Waste Water's actually done that, with high school kids. And that's an industry that people don't think about. And you don't have to have a college degree. You can go right into it and get your certification. So our Waste Water, our water reclamation manager has gone to the high schools to recruit.
All the one reason why we need to have a positive outlook at the city and constantly promote the positive that's happening to the city because it can be used as a workforce development tool, trying to bury the bad stuff and the negativity and just talk about all the great things.
I know also that the Chamber has been working on this workforce initiative to get sort of workforce readiness certificates and getting industries and employers to sign on to say, "If we get these kids with these workforce-ready certificates, would you be willing to hire them?" So the city could be one of those employers that says, "Yes, absolutely." And make sure that you got a track for them that gives them some of the skills that we use. So, you know, then they've got that motivation early on to say, "I know, if I just fall for it on this, there's going to be a place for me." So, kind of cool. Anything else on this particular? Okay, all will move on. Support and/or sponsorship, how to effectively support community programs or events? So, and I know many here know a lot more about the history than I do because I have been here that long. But I know that we have ongoing support and have that for a very long time. Our July 3rd festival and fireworks is attached to that. We do however, oftentimes simply receive unsolicited requests. They get received during the year for a program or event that comes up. Sometimes we budget it for them in advance. Sometimes they're unbudgeted. Sometimes we take them up. Sometimes they sort of fall through cracks. Past examples, you know, we have certainly funded the Broad Street Bash. We consistently fund youth programming at CDI at the community center. This last year for the first time, we did the Holiday Hoopla. We have been providing ongoing funding, although it's not a huge amount, to DMI for their operations. That number is what, twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand here? We have in-kind support oftentimes with staff time and facilities. So, you know, there's real value in terms of the hours of police officers or firefighters or public works that put in to support it, to set up barricades, to provide security, to do endless numbers of things and, you know, so there is value, and it takes away from our ability to do other things. Sometimes we waive permit requirements or deposits. We provided the Midtown Visitor Fear Support through the ARPA because that came along. So, the only thing is we don't have a particularly consistent method of doing this. And I think the hope would be that we discuss a little bit more maybe about how and the way you'd really like to see this done on a regular recurring basis. What is that process done the best way? What do we think is the best way? So, we can get requests sometimes that would be a parade or an event. It might be somebody doing programming, it might be a social service agency, a social welfare agency, a youth service agency that just needs operational money. Could be the arts or cultural things, entertainment, whether that's ongoing or recurring or one-time, various kinds of social welfare. So again, everybody's out there would like to have money, we would hear from them. The question is, you know, what should we be focusing on? What areas are the most important? The nonprofits, along with desired support for events, we also receive continual requests from nonprofit agencies that would desire assistance for ongoing operations. Now, within our community development block grant, we have a certain amount of monies that we can designate for public services. And each year we have a process that has a request for application. And then Susan, or is Ashley, who's better sort of talking about that kind of process? How much do we have on the day? A little bit? You know, just go ahead and quickly. Just kind of, as a point of reference for maybe how we link to other things.
Sure, so the city gets its annual allotment of CDPG grants. There is a certain percentage, I thought it was fifteen percent, that can be allocated towards effectively community events and public interest support. So that usually allot to somewhere in the hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year range that we can dedicate to these type of events. In order to get that done, we have to issue an RFP and a solicitation for agencies to propose what they would like funding for. They solicit that to the contractor that helps us sort through some of the CDPG issues. They're checked for HUD compliance, that it's an appropriate activity, and then we work with them to decide how we want to utilize that funding. In our HUD plans, we have goals for uses of funded. So we look to compare the suggested program versus the actual goals that are listed for the program, decide what we believe to be the best use of those funds every year and propose it to council to be approved for an annual action plan. So I think when we talk about this, and we've had this issue come up recently with Hoopla, is to say, you know, there's a way to handle this issue that would be a one-off request that come in. Or if we wanted to, the other opportunity would be to allocate a certain amount of money per year towards this type of support on top of what we do for CDPG and then allocate it annually perhaps in a similar process, or setting out some process by which agencies could apply for that funding. It gives us the ability to control what the ultimate amount is going to be and then one process to get that application in. So I think at this point, we were hoping to have some discussion amongst council members about what you would like to see happen and if there are priorities you want us to engage in to issue this kind of support on an ongoing basis.
And just to add to that, you know, there might be some, a few things that we know we always want to support and that's just not ongoing, and that's gonna be in the bucket, like the fireworks or DMI. But then perhaps we would say, look, we wanna budget a certain amount of money in advance of the year, and we'll call this Public Community Support Services, whatever, give it a name. And then it's a number, four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, something. And then each year, you would follow a process of soliciting from those who would like to get funded, and then there would be a committee of council, or however you would wanna set it up, or whatever process you might use, or councils as a whole, to say, okay, now we're gonna select within this budget, so that it's a very sort of refined, regular, recurring process that people understand the rules of the game and whether or not they'll fit into it, and then it becomes prioritized based on your own feelings, your own policy at the time. As opposed to the, hey, it's ad hoc, it comes forward, someone brings it up, is it a good idea? Maybe it is, maybe this, whatever, but at least it's a little bit more regular and expected and there's rules to it, would be a way to look at it. And then, a big part of it would be the budget each year to say, well, how much do we think we have available this year? And, you know, set that, and then basically people would know what they have to work for. Like any grant program, basically, you know, a state comes out with a grant program and says, we have ten million dollars, everybody needs to apply. Well, in this case, we say, we have, you know, whatever the number is, everybody that's qualified, whatever qualified is, needs to apply. So, thoughts just on the process we use, what you'd like to see in the future?
Refresh my memory on CBI, did they get, I know we subsidized them about a hundred thousand every year, is that all CDPG, or did some of that come out of the general fund? I wanna say it's CDPG.
I'm linking on that one now, I think it is all CDPG, but I apologize, I'm really.
But even those allocations, they have to submit an application every year. I mean, it's pretty much the same every year and they ask for the same amount, relatively.
They generally, they pretty much get the same amount.
Right, right, but they still have to apply.
I ask because I kinda think of that a little bit, the CDPG application a little bit differently than I think about balloon fest, or whatever it might be.
Yes, because that tends to be your social welfare, those kinds of things, youth programming, low-income programming, as opposed to cultural enrichment and entertainment and things like that.
I think we bring it up more to set a framework of, hey, this is a process by which it's set out every year, there are rules for evaluation, there's a timeline, and it maybe is a way to, there will be a potential framework there for creating some program of our own that says, hey, we're gonna create a lot of funding and have applications and be able to evaluate them in some way that is a little bit more regulated as opposed to just, somebody makes a request and we decide whether we wanna deal with it at that point or not.
I think doing it twice a year, where we have a certain amount in the budget, but having two cycles, because it is also unrealistic. A lot of these groups aren't gonna have their ducks in a row at the beginning of the year necessarily. It may be a really great event, it's in the second half of the year, but if we do it twice a year, it could get more often than that and it's almost too much, it's just my initial thoughts, but having it twice a year, a certain amount, and being able to allocate that to include a dollar amount, but also perhaps a certain number of in-kind hours of labor that we're willing to dole out as well. I mean, you know, lord knows Public Works only has so much to give out, so we don't wanna be over, you know, over agreeing them into things as well.
That's an interesting concept, because if you get this really big thing, I don't know how many hours it becomes, the one thing may take up all those hours, I mean, that's a really good point. And I don't know if you're even prepared to, but Scott or one of the chiefs, do you know how many hours for some of these events sometimes, the total man-hours that we might dedicate to? Any idea?
Not off the top of my head, I mean, now we charge for it unless it's, you know, unless it's agreed to by the city manager or like a city response, we're charging for it.
And like for Hoopla, we paid money to hire police officers and then security too, so it wasn't like, I mean, it's real money for, you know, real services, so.
If you put or apply, I think there is the, I think on here there should be a table that is with our special events application, that says, hey, if you need these services, here is what the charge there are, that we schedule for that. And so I guess the second part of this conversation is the idea of in-kind donations of, you know, we can dedicate a certain amount of money a year, we could also say, well, we're willing to waive some of these fees, some of them, not all of them, we could say a certain number of hours, like it's sort of a multi-tiered conversation, we able to say, there's financial donations, but then also this will be associated with those certain costs. Do you wanna look at more towards in-kind donations for things like that? And what the capabilities are at each department?
To me, waiving of fees is the same as a donation of money. I think I equate those to the same amount, but man-hours is a little, maybe a little different? But then again, there is a dollar amount associated with that as well, I mean, we could.
Yeah, so for instance, we could, as Scott says, waive the charges, you know? That's a value, that's a contribution.
I should say, we only charge overtime, so if we set up something during the day, it will be on our own time, or we're effectively.
So those hours definitely do.
I can tell you when we were doing the Midtown Growth Project, we were kind of looking at trying to centralize things. There are a lot of events in Midtown, so everyone says what we're willing to do, they're crazy because there's literally fifteen thousand, I mean, there is a lot of different events. So I just wanna make sure that we know that because there's gonna be a lot of people out looking for support.
I'm curious, maybe like, for those of you that are a little bit newer, whether it be Jim, or Nathan, or Chrishell, or Ben, that work with other communities, like how other communities do it? Or is it just a complete hodgepodge and there's no best practice?
My experience has been, a couple employers previously, is they had, I won't say it was incredibly dogmatic and, you know, had very specific, you know, handwriting rules, but it was a discussion that was had with all of our community partners, with all of our nonprofits in there that have annual events, that have, you know, other types of programs. They would set up almost an annual, annual vetting process to say, okay. It was usually typically part of the budgeting process, more or less, but being somewhat specific of saying, okay, here's what we're gonna have in terms of our support for the Fourth of July events, or for, you know, holiday walk downtown, or whatever the case might be, with then a little bit of what I would call opportunity reserve, put in the budget with some programmatic guidelines that says, to the city manager and staff, if you receive requests throughout the year that meet these criteria and we're within these thresholds, bring them forward. If not, please tell them thank you, but no thank you, and, you know, see how else you may be able to assist them, so. But I think, I think really, because it's always a struggle, I know, for, for all the new beings, you're elected officials on top of, and you always, we always wanna, you know, try to support as many people as we can. You don't necessarily wanna pick winners and losers if you have a room full of winners. So, trying to create some sort of objective scoring system or a timeframe for requests to come in in advance may be very prudent.
Like, I learned last year that we don't have, we don't oversee our parades, which I think is just crazy, because every other community that I've worked in, the community is like in charge of the parades. Ours is like volunteer-driven, but then they're coming to the city and they're like, well, can we have insurance? We need money for insurance, can you give us a grant? And I'm like, why, or we do, why isn't the city have like a policy for these, you know, for these parades? Or have a person, or have an events person that can do this kind of, you know, permitting and money-taking and grant, granting? It's just, it's very, you know, you've got one person overseeing two parades, and there's another person that oversees another, there's not even just one person over all the parades. It's very, very crazy.
Now, what kind of organizational position would you, would usually be in charge of, say, parades?
Recreation.
Recreation? Just trying to get to that.
Or some events person, you know?
To go back to the point you made earlier, Tao, about, you know, are there some strategic positions that could help us to better sort of implement some of these goals?
Or can we expand another position to, you know, offer them more, but give them more responsibilities in the face of the future?
Taking off on what Nathan was saying, I would say in my best experience from what I've used to seeing would be, it is usually budget-driven, so the support lines up in the budget, and usually because the community has developed over time a series of big important specific events or programs that they've got used to funding, and then each year it lines up in the budget. And then to make it, if you're a new event, that becomes relatively difficult. Then you sort of, you know, you lobby your city council and you say, hey, before the next year's budget, is there any way you can contemplate helping us and that type of thing? And then maybe over time, it might make it in, but once it's in, it kind of, you know, it stays there. It keeps getting support, so that's what I.
I agree with what you guys and what the mayor said, I mean, you allot, I like the idea of twice a year, January, July, whatever, you allot, if it's three hundred thousand dollars, you allot that, it's a hundred and fifty each session. You gotta come and ask for it, but that would avoid, that would give us an idea knowing what we can give out, what we can't. Because what happens is, is what happened with the Midtown Visitor Fear, where they came in and asked for X amount of dollars for this, well, what happened was, you know, Ohio Balloon Challenge, so everybody else said, what about us? You're gonna do the same thing for us, and that way we don't have that problem. We can say, we can't give you a hundred thousand because we only have a hundred and fifty thousand a session, we can give you something, but not that, and I think that makes it fair. And they have to go through the application process and then council votes on it. But there's, like Chrishell said, there are so many, so many events here that people don't even know about. Like at Douglas Park, has many that people don't know about, so did Sherman Park, and but that gives us an opportunity to get it out to everybody and market it. But I think we can't just have people come in like we did recently and ask for two hundred thousand a year.
Yep, it's council in a really difficult position, I think, those ad hoc ones. And it's not to the fault of anyone coming to council, it's just there's not a process.
I think what's happened too is people, I'm sorry, I think people also see the ARPA dollars and think that's free money, let's come take it, and we can't look at it like that, because that's a one-time shot. I'm not gonna have that in a few years, so, you know, I love the idea about twice a year. I think that's a great idea.
And maybe only award them once every two or three years, because you don't want the people coming back every year. You want them to eventually make their own money so that they can do it. If they're not sustainable, then they're probably.
I was thinking that.
Yeah, it's great.
So, I'm hearing the desire, the attraction to two, two time a year, and then I think clearly this idea of transparency and criteria, setting standards, all agencies understand exactly what the rules of the game are in advance of the game. And then if it's twice a year, you know, if you could apply, how much money would be available because it's budgeted?
And so that would, we would look to start that in twenty-three, I would assume?
Yeah, that's a lot, sure, because that's the next budget we'll be preparing, but that gives us really great direction if that's the kind of thing you'd like to see.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if we could do this, if we could maybe put it out and do this before we set the budget for twenty twenty-three?
Instead of the program itself.
And then I also like the idea of putting a dollar amount to all the in-kind and setting a budget for that as well, I thought that was a good point.
Nathan, you're taking notes on all this, right?
You know it.
No question.
Honestly, critically important to setting up that program is to look at how much have we spent each year dollar-wise, but also, you know, for Public Works, not to just look at the overtime that you've spent, but the actual man-hours you've spent, because that is just.
I was able to pull up our, I think our stats from last year, looked like we spent a little over two thousand hours on specialty.
Can you even put that in context right now, it's what hours?
Forty hours a week, so basically that's one full-time job.
Right, I mean, I don't know how much one, you know, how much per hour, maybe one, we pay sixty dollars an hour at.
But I mean, that is part of, you know, the city should be doing a lot of that.
Yeah, it's part of the city's job, it's.
But if we could clearly identify it, then I think then we can clearly identify the benefit that the city is providing to a lot of these nonprofit organizations where we provide in-kind, you know, services or labor, man-hours, all of those things.
Does the city staff still consider the fireworks a city event, for the most part? They do, Scott? Well, so, how would that affect them not coming back? We said, we don't want you back every year, but that would be.
I put that as a separate bucket.
Yeah, I think that could just be a separate bucket, I think that's not where you budget that separately. It might be like DMI, you know, you're just budgeting that separately.
So there are city-owned events then, and then there are nonprofit.
Really, the city's.
Really, the independence thing is the, I think, really whole city.
Nationalite out. Oh, yeah, you guys, we do nationalite out, that's we have in our budget for funding, but the city helps.
So there would be a few line items for those that are sanctioned and recurring, and yeah, we know.
I'd like to see those in the budget still together with the other ones that we can see as a whole, how much we're spending on all of it, but then divide it out.
So what's the number that's appropriate for, to do every year?
I'd like to see what has been spent annually and let them kind of come up with that maybe to begin with, because I have no.
You might be surprised when you kind of go through it and figure out how much, you know, five thousand here, five thousand here, that adds up, so.
And Public Works may find that, you know, January through June, when you dub you up how many hours, you get fewer hours than in July through December. And so we may not be able to allocate the hours fifty-fifty when it comes to that. Same with events, we may find there are more events in the second half of the year that we spent money on, so we may not wanna go fifty-fifty on the budget either.
I was gonna say, I'd be okay with like up to two-thirds for the first six months, like, so that way we can be a little bit flexible and carryover, whatever, you know? Yeah, the carryover bound.
Yeah, Scott and Ally shared a draft at the last park board meeting that sort of broke down all the hours from month to month on different projects that they do, so maybe that's something that we could share with all of council that could help to sort of put that into perspective.
Very much appreciate this conversation.
No, it's really great direction, I think it's important, yeah, because I think it's a great time then to develop the program in advance, and then do a budget for it with the twenty-three years, so.
Now, we are gonna have some people requesting soon for money for events.
Which times, what are you expecting?
So, one is for a combination between DMI and WECAN, Business Incubator, Adrian Shear, they wanna do a First Friday event on June third, calling it Part of Our Progress, in effect, would be like a, you know, one night concert downtown. They're looking to push more on the, where the current project is on Central.
White White Dog.
By White Dog, versus, you know, traditionally you've had the Broad Street Bash at Broad and Central, they're looking to do a one-time event, so I think they're gonna be asking for, whether it's in-kind or some actual financial assistance with that. And we also met with Ashley Baumgarten last week about a concert, concert plus concert series at Sunset Park this summer. Just the first week, well, we met last summer about this, I thought, I think the real first meeting was here last week.
She said you guys were very early.
Right, so she was thinking three concerts at Sunset Park this summer, like June, July, August. She's gonna come back with some sort of request.
So cool.
Just so you know, there are things out there that are gonna come.
But that's for twenty-two?
Yeah, they're working on it now.
How would, I guess I'm curious, with the White Dogs, you know, with Central being torn up?
Well, really, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the city-owned parking lots that are behind the White Dogs that actually have access off of Manchester, since we're gonna be cleaning up all the parking lots anyways.
So what do they need money for? Is that a DMI event?
It's more like in-kind. It's more like in-kind, so like, for example, we usually charge to use the showmobile.
So maybe good, okay.
That nature.
Which way do you mean some of those cars?
Correct.
Okay, well, we start putting together that budget for next year, because you definitely think so.
And, uh, we're gonna have to continue as we have been until then, I mean, we can't really.
At least we have a plan.
Yeah.
That's a good thing for the future.
For the Part of Our Progress, um, since it is also, um, playing on our roads improvement, um, theme, is there any, I know we had some marketing dollars that were allocated for Part of Our Progress campaign, so is that something that we can?
You make a good point. I think we may have some money budgeted that could actually help them because they are doing something on our behalf.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's, it's, it's great PR for the city and for all of the work that we've done. So I, I would see that as a good investment of our marketing dollars.
And for example, even with the Sunset Park Concert Series, you know, we would really want to do like a big grand reopening of Sunset Park when we finish that project. But because of COVID, we didn't do that. I don't know, maybe we could talk, talk.
Funding?
Absolutely, I think that's part of marketing, it's, it's, it's promoting what the city's programs are, so.
Well, and because of the delay, as it is COVID-related, is there ARPA money in some column that we could afford that?
It may just be with money, so we have budgets somewhere else to do something for it, so, yeah. I don't know that that's unreasonable.
We used to have, I don't want to go back a long time, but some of you guys might remember, but we used to have the concerts in the parks here. And they were well-attended, very well-attended.
I remember they used, they used to do them, uh, actually in the, uh, the, I don't know, according to several of them in the, uh, open field next to the ARPA research. Because it's always just been open field, and so they used to have big concert events out there, which is sort of strange because we haven't seen anyone use that space in so long.
Very helpful, thank you. I think we got a lot of good direction for the future. Other comments, thoughts on this particular area? We're a little bit ahead of time, we were gonna take a break at six, but.
Do we, do we want to talk strategically about what the factors are when it comes to these events that, you know,
Sure, absolutely.
We would like them to, like, what are the, you're gonna have to be coming up with that, right?
What are the goals?
We have a minute to get.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you have, yeah, thoughts and so on.
I mean, I think that the number of attendees is definitely one of the, um, fields that I would, that would need to be asked, you know, the number of, of days. But I, like, if, if they're charging any fee?
Is it a free event?
Yeah, is it free to the public?
I think one of the things, just throwing out there, is we have the Visitor's Bureau, and that is to attract visitors through the town, and they have their funding. These might, should be for like the community, like these would be for community events.
I agree.
Good for, yeah, good for.
Not using.
We're not trying to draw people, you know?
Exactly, we don't want, we don't want for Manchester to come sit in the park and act, I mean, they can, but really it's supposed to be for, to build a community up and to provide community assets and whatever.
Even, I guess, given that, um, the capacity of the event is critically important, you know, if it's, if they are expecting, you know, twenty people, it's a lot different than, you know, if they can.
Like the fireworks.
Yeah.
I would also love to hear some thoughts on, um, people asking for single events versus some of our, like, cultural assets that are doing ongoing things, but still making help. So, um, the SORG needs operating help, and I'm just throwing this out, or Art Central wants some help for something versus somebody trying to do an event. And do you want to prioritize one of those types over the other?
So a hoop law for, say, throw out a number, say fifty thousand versus a one-time Broad Street Bash for fifteen thousand?
Yeah, or, um, you know, Art Central wants to, something, needs to help operate one year. Is that, you know, something you want to consider donating to, or is it a hoop law that's a, a one-off event versus something that's ongoing operating?
I mean, I think somebody ongoing operating could be welcome to apply even regularly as well. I mean, like annually apply for that. Yeah, or they could apply for six months if they want, and if we.
Man, I think of that as more CDBG.
So, see, and that can be, that's one of the ways we could prepare. CDBG has to have some very specific, um, classification requirements. So you do limit it. And it's fine if we don't, you know, if we say, hey, we're gonna use some priority over the other. I just wanted to see if there was any strong chicken to say, um, you know.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying no, I'm not close-minded to it, but this conversation for me, as I thought about it ahead of time, is more the fun things.
Sure.
The recreational, the community building, and if we get into talking about positions, I think you can really easily slide into, well, now, the city's gonna fund that every year. So I get a little nervous, so.
Can you touch on those specific, some of those specific requirements for CDBG for, like, state nonprofits that might apply for us for that annual funding? Like what?
It is largely tied to the percentage of low to moderate income residents that are touched.
And sometimes the reporting requirements can be really difficult. Because for instance, say you're the SORG and your patrons come from all over, how do you determine if that patron was low to moderate income? It's really hard. So some programs lend themselves to none or to conduct others.
I know that the SORG does some free events throughout the year, like they, you know, I think they do movie showings during Hocus Pocus and that sort of thing. So maybe there's some way for them to apply for specific events that they offer that do happen to be free to the public and that could maybe help them subsidize some of those free events that they're offering.
Even on those free events, though, they still have to keep track and focus on marketing towards particularly low to moderate income residents. So you'd have to be willing, yes, but you'd also have to be willing to collect information on the front end. We can then provide to HUD that says this wasn't appropriate use for those funds. Um, and so that first challenge.
Just trying to figure out that stuff.
Yeah, so for instance, can you, hey, it's free, but you have to give me your yearly income information before I'll owe you anything?
The other thing is the community foundation has a great application that's, but I think it closes March first or something. So maybe we can talk to them and see what their application looks like and see what kind of, who's applying? Because maybe then they can, because I direct people to them, like, sometimes people that are coming up, they say, well, that's really, you should talk to the community foundation for like a, um, it was a day of school or something like that, if they wanted to do, um, so. There's funding out there, we just have to let people know about it.
I would definitely like to see, um, you know, the budget for the event as well. Because I think sometimes we get asked for X amount of money and I'd like to know kind of how much of the full budget that is and like how, you know, how, what the money would be used for specifically as well. So just when it comes to like what that form might look like.
Does the city get, does the city get a report back when we give money to somebody for an event like that of what everything was spent for? And then we might get a budget upfront, but for example, we just gave, we just gave, we just gave.
Like a audit, like an audit of their receipts?
I'm just, I'm bringing up the money we just, during the, uh, the Visitor's Bureau. I mean, we gave X amount of dollars. I mean, do we get something back saying this is what we spent it on? Or do we just assume, I'm not picking on the Visitor's Bureau, I'm just having the last one we gave.
Specifically, the Visitor's Bureau, um, annually presents their, all of their numbers to us as a sub, sub-organization of, of the city. So there is some reporting requirements, I think, for them specifically, but.
I'm trying to think through it.
It'd be nice.
Traditionally, when we, um, get reports of it, it's, it's applied to other forms of grant dollars. So CDBG has some HUD requirements that we have to provide for. So I get reports on that because we have to then turn it over to HUD. Um, the ARPA payments, we're going to have to have some, um, accounting for that. So typically what we put in is because there was some requirement for us to then report it to someone else. Um, I can't think off the top of my head of any other instance where we would get that type of reporting, but we certainly could bake it in.
I'm just curious.
Is there some way we could, uh, like you said, bake it in? But then, I, you know, I appreciate getting that presentation at council where not just we see the numbers and the results from, um, you know, the dollars that are being spent, that the citizens also have an opportunity to see those in a public forum.
Yeah, absolutely, that could become part of the program. That says, you know, if you receive dollars, then you will be required annually to report back or inform annually or whatever on how those dollars are structured.
And then take, I mean, it's a little far in the weeds, but I think the other thing is too, some things we've done at economic belt, so we should get credit for it. They should put our logo on it or call us a sponsor or come to, um, be part of a grand opening, you know, have the mayor there for ribbon cutting or come to council, thank us something, because we want that continued press and momentum to know, people know that we're doing that. I think that's why we did, when we put that in-kind in the hoop, like, just to let people know that we, we did more than the cash. Like, we were very supportive of this project and it wasn't to say, oh, we did this. It was like, no, it's to show that there were other services and, and money that were involved and things of that nature.
Something else, yeah, something else I'd like to see in these is what their marketing budget and plan is, because I think often a lot of these events, they'll have it or they'll say they're gonna have it, and I don't think they focus so much on the marketing piece. And as a result, it may not have the impact that we're trying to have with the money. And maybe some of the money that they're asking for is for marketing, and that's fine. But I want to make sure that there is a plan for the marketing, because I've seen a little bit of that fall flat on some of the events that I, I don't want it, you know, I want to make sure it gets out and not just to the friends of whomever, you know, is, is running the event in their circles or whatever. It may be, just as I'm brainstorming, what?
Maybe that's a collaboration with our own communications department and just making sure that we've got information to push out to our people on the city's website and on the city's Facebook page and all of the ways that we communicate with residents. You know, if there was some collaborative effort in these applications to, you know, that they would work with our, our city communications to help with that.
Well, usually you'd have a recreation director who helps with that.
Right.
It sounds like we found a position to be in.
Well, I think that would help too, as, as program, because I know Shelby put like every event, whenever anyone had said she would put it in there, but it would just be nice to have a, a catch-all area to.
It just wasn't being, yeah.
No, exactly.
Thank you all, really good discussion with that we have in our root time. So for the last few seconds, we're gonna say, let's just keep it frank. So please continue to eat it, don't, don't stop on our account, but we will continue because we expect it. In order to finish my time, we would have to continue presentations. So in honor of you having your brownie, we thought we'd talk about marijuana policies.
For the river, they do not.
There is nothing about brownie in this.
And Ashley Holmes, our development services manager, is going to take you through an update.
Jim, you get an A-plus for that one.
No, I got it.
Pretty funny. He's been saving it.
We were making these jokes all week.
I swear we had none, but this was like just a coincidence, just around the top.
So a little bit about kind of where we are and if there are any opportunities for change. You know, do you want to do that and kind of look into the future? So with that, Ashley, we'll let you take over.
If it's okay, I'm gonna sit. Do you want to go to the first slide for me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so just to start off with a little bit of history, probably well-aware, but in case you know the public listening, we do have existing moratorium on medical marijuana. So to give you the background, on June sixth, two thousand sixteen, Governor Case excited to law House Bill five-two-three, guiding legalization of medical marijuana in the state of Ohio. On September ninth, two thousand sixteen, the city council, the Middletown City Council adopted a resolution R two thousand sixteen dash thirty-five, which issued a six-month moratorium. So the city just figured out what direction did we want to take. And then after that six months, on February twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, we passed a ordinance number O two thousand seventeen dash O seven that prohibits the cultivation, processing, or retail dispensing of medical marijuana with the in our city limits. The city staff recommend to the city council to enact a ban, so we will censor all the alternatives regarding regulation of these businesses until a time where the state of Ohio issues actual regulations for the businesses. So where we are now, it's been five years, do we want to consider moving forward?
And I think the other piece of that was, we were waiting on, we kept waiting on the state to put our rules. The state kept bumping when the rules were coming out, so it's like, we didn't know what the rules were gonna be or where things should go, and so it was a little bit, you know.
That's absolutely true. When they passed this law in twenty sixteen, the regulations indicated what was gonna happen, it didn't come out of the state. I think it was eight, six or sixteen or eighteen months later. And so the idea was if you banned it, we would be able to move backwards at any time, but once the businesses came in, regardless of what the regulations were, we would have had a hard time effectively pulling back the curtain. Um, so the idea was to, to do a ban until we knew how this was going to go, and that didn't come till eighteen months afterwards.
And is this the first time it's been revisited since then?
Yes.
Yeah, so if we're going to move forward, so is it stop, react, or protect? What we would need to consider is where do we allow these in the cities, within the city, for dispensaries and cultivation facilities? Well, for sensitive zones, you know, how close can these locate to schools, daycares, other similar uses? Dispersion between retail stores, should there be so many feet, five hundred feet, a thousand feet? And then do we have a cap for retail sale locations? Should there be a certain amount of these allowance to the limits? The city is developing a treaty for that. Uh, we discussed potential future locations for both medical marijuana dispensaries and medical marijuana facilities. If the city were allowing these uses, staff recommends that the cultivation be indoors, not they permitted outside. The medical marijuana dispensaries, uh, be permitted with standards in our zoning districts for business. So V one, neighborhood business, V two, community business district, V three, prohibited in all other zoning districts. The city's business zoning districts are primarily located around the mall area. There's a portion around throughout Boulevard and just outside the city downtown area, there are also scattered markets. Medical marijuana cultivation facilities, uh, permitted in industrial, so we have I one and I two, uh, prohibited in all other zoning districts. The city's primary, uh, industrial zoning districts are primarily located, again, around the downtown. And there's, uh, southern portions of the city, which you know AK Steel takes about one-third. So obviously that would not be one of the locations, but there are other areas to the south. So please, again, feel free to jump in. Production versus retail dispensary. Production, the Ohio Department of Commerce licenses and regulates medical marijuana processors and processor manufacturers medical marijuana products. There are three different types of processors, standalone, vertically integrated facilities, implant oligi-processor, which is a cultivator who distributes plant material directly to dispensers. Processor, per the Ohio revised code, chapter thirty-seven ninety-six, means an entity that has been issued a certificate of authorization by the department to manufacture medical marijuana products. A retail dispensary, the state of Ohio pharmacy licenses and regulates medical marijuana dispensaries. To receive a certificate of operation, each provisional licensee must comply with the statutory and rule requirements. Dispensary per Ohio revised code thirty-seven ninety-six means an entity licensed pursuant to sections three seven, thirty-seven ninety-six point four to thirty-seven ninety-six point ten of the revised code and any rules that are under to sell medical marijuana to qualified patients and care givers. Dispense means the delivery of medical marijuana to a patient or patient's registered caregiver that is packaged in a suitable container appropriately labeled for subsequent administration to use or, sorry, to or use by a patient who has an active patient registration in a state of Ohio issued by the board pharmacy, authorizing them to receive medical marijuana. So what's important if you consider for us is there's statewide recreation coming. So for our research, Ohio is watching two separate paths to adult use legalization, uh, to develop. One is through the traditional legislative process and the other is through the initiating statute by the group of coalition to regulate marijuana like alcohol. The initiated statute that we're watching calls to end marijuana prohibition, creates division of cannabis control in Ohio, uh, Department of Commerce regulation, allows medical marijuana cultivators and dispensaries to expand to the adult use market, creates a social equitable fund. The proposed legislation that we're watching would allow for cultivation and possession of marijuana, expunges certain marijuana convictions, and creates a tax on marijuana products. So Ben's probably gonna be the next best person for this, but in the meantime, we requested Brickler and Eckler to research how other municipalities are drafting or starting a point of consideration for allowing certain medical marijuana facilities. If the city wishes to move forward with allowance, the following regulations that you're gonna see on the next few slides uh, could be revised and altered by the council if we wish to go forward. We can call a future work session in the future with our law and other staff to discuss this in greater detail. But again, the important stuff tonight is putting it back in the front of our minds and saying to, we want to move forward for this. So I don't know if Ben wanted to talk a little bit more, but these are the drafted ordinance for, specifically for Middletown by Brickler and Eckler.
Yeah, I mean, in simple form, it's basically Ohio medical marijuana is now legal. If you want it to be in your community, um, each community gets assigned, there's those three types that Ashley talked about, the growers, basically the processors, and the retailer. You can decide what you want. Customarily, you're seeing most communities group both the growers and the processors together, one grouping. Those are more often seen in kind of industrial business districts, a little bit in business districts, obviously not residential. And then you have your dispensaries, um, who basically, you know, you're seeing those in business districts. So it's in, in very basic terms is do you want it or not? Uh, it seems like, you know, you might wanna ask your police folks as well of what they're seeing in other communities. This is quite literally my second retreat this week where the concept of doing this has been brought up. Um, and do we wanna allow it or not? I, that's for you all to decide. If you want to, I think, um, you know, a lot of the things to consider, it's just like Ashley said, is and it's what everyone else is doing is, okay, what about churches, schools, residential districts? How close one from another? What about licensing schemes, stuff like that? At the end of the day though, if you guys want it, we can find a way to pay for it in a regulatory scheme that will pass, you know, legal muster, um, get the job done. You just need to tell us what you want and we can find a way to pay for it.
Yes, I have a question for our staff. I know that recently we were approached by someone who actually had interest in wanting to do production. But have we had anyone show demand or want to do a dispensary, a retail dispensary?
Yes.
Does that go forward?
Yes, yeah.
We do.
We do, almost weekly.
Okay.
And regards to the, um, production, the payroll that they're looking at is anywhere from like sixty to ninety thousand dollars a year. They are very well-paid, um, producers.
So for, for one salary?
Question for Ben. Ben, have you seen other cities that only allowed production and processing and not dispensaries?
Yep.
So that's a possibility?
Yeah, it's a policy-based decision. Some are thinking, oh, and I'll just speak bluntly. Some are thinking of, oh my gosh, I've got concerns with people coming into dispensary and what secondary effects would be with that. Maybe I don't like that, but I don't mind a warehouse that no one would know anything about that's growing marijuana there.
And it pays people well perhaps to, yeah.
And quite commercially, others think the exact opposite and they're like, oh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna pot farm in my community. But if people need medical marijuana to help, you know, with their medical needs, I'm, you know, not opposed to that. So you'll see some that allow all, some that allow, allow one, some that allow the other.
Do you see a lot that require like, um, like in addition to all of this, that, that they would require notification to a certain, certain particular distance around the location? So like, say somebody wants to put in a dispensary or a facility, like what is the notification area to do all that?
That's up to us, whatever we want it to be. I haven't, I don't recall any community putting in place with its regulatory scheme kind of like a notification requirement. You have that with, you know, cell phone towers, you'll have that with, um, some sexual oriented businesses, things of that nature. But I, I don't recall seeing one. Not to say can't do it if you want.
My, just one initial first thing, recreational versus medical, to me, I don't really see a difference because I feel like anecdotally, if people want to have a medical reason for it, I don't know of anyone who hasn't been able to obtain said medical, uh, reason for it. So in my mind, I'm not really different on the two initially, at least. Um, my first thought is whether we want it or not at all. So I guess just as a.
And that was gonna be the next question, basically. Our status is we have more time. We don't have to do a thing, it can continue. Or we do get these requests and, you know, from an economic development standpoint, for instance, the processing, the production, they're pretty heavily capitalized, they're internal, they pay their people pretty well. But again, it's a policy question. If you really don't wanna see that in your community, then we would continue. But if it's something you wanna entertain, then we can start to contemplate what it looks like to put together the regulations. And then it's dispensaries versus production and processing. So one versus the other, um, purely a policy, but it was time to just sort of have this discussion again to say.
I think just from living here my whole life, I think the hard part is going to be just finding out what the community wants. Because when people hear this, immediately they think, oh my God, everybody around smoking dope all over Middletown, you know, and that's what they're gonna hear. But the cold hard fact is, I think most of us who were raised in the seventies and eighties were, we were led to believe that marijuana was the devil's lettuce and we're gonna die if you do it. And that's simply not the case. It's just not, there's no facts to support that. It's, it's basically a dispensary now for, for the medical parts of pharmacy. Doctors have to prescribe it.
Yeah.
And I think we're, we're narrow-minded if we don't at least consider it. Not saying we gotta do it, but to consider it, um, simply because that's what it is. As far as the, this, the recreational, I'm hearing from my friends in Columbus, you guys have friends in Columbus, that is probably not gonna fly recreational here anytime soon. That doesn't mean I'm right. I'm saying that's what I'm hearing from people in Columbus. So, um, with that being said, I, I don't have a problem lifting the moratorium just so we can investigate it. If council decides not to do it, then we don't do it. Um, but I think we should at least consider.
If we lifted moratorium, though, that would allow, they could just do it without us asking.
Legally, what legally what you wanna do is, is research how you want it first and then lift the moratorium. Because if you're gonna put in things like zoning restrictions, locations and things like that, you want that in place at the time businesses apply so that you don't get any questions about how they're treated. Um, so we would leave the moratorium in place, we'd certainly investigate whatever we would like or do whatever outreach we would like. I mean, we've got it in place until you know what you want the regulations to be, put those in place and then what.
I'm curious what the chief, chief Burke thinks.
Uh, this was brought out during negotiations and I think the union supports like the growing of the production, but I think the retail stores, I think they may have a problem with. So I think they support, you know, having a warehouse off Yankee or Main Industrial Road away from everybody and they're growing in the warehouse and nobody knows what it is. They're supportive of that because it brings businesses, it brings jobs in. But I think the retail stores, I mean, we have enough pawn shops in the city. So last thing I wanna do is probably bring a retail store now selling, you know, gummy bears and everything else. But I think they support the idea of growing.
Do you think that when, when they put in the location in Monroe, that you saw a notable change? Um, I mean, ultimately, anyone who doesn't buy it here and has an ethical license can go anywhere they want, anywhere around here or purchase it legally. And then you say something about people smoking in the streets. Well, if they have a, like, if they have a medical card and they've legally purchased it, they're, they can do that. So, I mean, I guess that's where I, that's where I.
Well, the marijuana medical card, you have to, it's either in liquid form, gummy form, or an edible. They can't actually purchase the marijuana buds to smoke.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, that's the difference. They, this is.
I thought that they did, I thought that they did have that at the end of Monroe.
Medical card is just for gummies, it's for edibles or liquid. Um, it's not for, um, actual smoking buts for high.
Yeah, the regulations prevent that.
Yeah, they can smoke it through like those bait pen things or whatever.
It's like.
They can do it wrong with it. So, I'm just saying.
I will say I spoke with John Patterson, he does the economic development.
I think you just said I smoked.
That's hilarious.
I know what was regular. I smoked.
Oh, man, you're suspicious.
Keep that round. Cause I got that same question too, so I was curious what their experience was and she ended, and it was very positive. Um, but they did not have, um, their police were initially very concerned. They didn't have any of the problems that they thought they were going to have. Um, and generally it's built up in pretty positively is their experience.
I feel like it's kind of like everybody thought the casino was gonna cause, you know, drugs and prostitution, all these types of things. And you, you look at it and it's actually a really nice, clean place.
I was actually in one of those meetings where it was said, when I was a sergeant and the casino thing was brought up and they talked about bringing prostitutes and drugs to Middletown. And that was, uh, something on council was like, it's not as bad for the city. It was one of the dumbest things we ever did. And not getting that.
And I would say that like just from on Facebook, I mean, because obviously like when we brought this up at a more, at a previous meeting, it made its way to Facebook and there was a lot of discussion there. Um, and there were definitely people on both sides. But I would say, I mean, reading through every single comment, the majority were in favor of lifting the moratorium. Now, that's just a sliver of, you know, uh, uh, of the population there. But I, I mean, I think that's certainly something that we have to consider. Like, how is the majority of our citizens going to, going to take this?
Yeah, there's gonna be opposition from.
Would there be value in number one, doing a survey, for instance, on the website? Saying, hey, we're contemplating this, what do you think? And then maybe holding a public hearing in which you say, hey, we wanna hear from you. We're gonna discuss this issue.
Yeah, I don't think in any way it should be just our decision or the five of us saying, I think this is right or I think this is wrong. I think it's something that we have to ask them to.
There's no question, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lightning rod for some, so you have to let them speak.
And I will say like something to consider there too is historically studies show that people will show up more in opposition of something than in support. So that, I don't know, will give us the full circle view of the community either. I don't think we're ever gonna have one hundred percent like.
But I think the, the, an anonymous survey that someone could fill out online or they don't have to give their name or something like that. You know, I think that does give us a little bit more of an accurate representation.
And you might get like emails of support. Sometimes people are.
Right.
We've already gotten emails of support.
Yeah.
All we can do is let the investor anonymous.
And I know chief, I know in the cab meeting in January, I think it was, I know a bunch of people in that, uh, meeting were talking about, I don't know if it was the gummies or whatever and they were, the THC gummies. And people were freaking out about that and upset about that. So this is just gonna raise the stakes a little bit. So you will have people show up in opposition a lot probably.
Uh, is this something that you guys spoke about at Cal at all?
No, it's been, it's been like.
No, but like this specifically, the moratorium, did you guys touch on that at all?
Uh, yeah, actually we talked, well, we talked about it within the union and, uh, we were just trying to get your ideas. Cause we actually understand that, so there's a thing in the contract about if you have a medical marijuana and you're working as an officer, so we wanted to get the word in trade in there. So that's how the topic got up, but we actually.
Tell me a little bit more about that. How does that, how does that play in with marijuana and the?
Well, that's the thing. I mean, even if you have a medical marijuana, you know, certain drugs, you have to let your supervisor know that you're on because you can't drive a car.
Right.
I can't give you a gun to go on the street. So we had to make sure we put that in the, uh, contract.
Okay.
So, uh.
So they're allowed to have a medical marijuana license?
Well, you just can't, I mean, you just can't work if you're using that.
And you're bound to be.
Under the influence.
Yeah, right, so.
Yeah, just in general, yeah, the same way as.
And that way they have enough to lead for it.
Yeah.
So, but that's how this got started and that's how it ranged out to, if we, there's people that have come and wanted to produce marijuana in town, but they object to it and they said, no.
Yeah.
As long as they're growing it and have a warehouse, but I think the retail stores make me some opposition.
I'm definitely one hundred percent opposition to anything that's gonna create an odor from a factory. No more of that Middletown, like nah, nope, yeah. So I know when you had mentioned some of them, uh, like the outdoor facilities.
Yes, yeah, you don't wanna see.
Right.
So you just, I don't even want that on the table.
Just there, what are the type, like if we do production in the, in the made industrial part, for example, what? So you guys have heard from people, right? And I saw the, the one that's going in in Kentucky from a Hamilton company, I can't, I don't recall the name. But I, I forget how many jobs, but it was gonna bring a ton of jobs, right? It's like theoretically, like what kind of jobs?
Michelle, do you remember?
Yeah, it was, I think it was anywhere from like seventy-five to a hundred jobs. But I think average salary was anywhere from like sixty to ninety. It was, it was, I mean, the payroll was up there, uh, cause they have to be specialized, a lot of, a lot of security. Um, and most of the time they're, there's somebody there twenty-four hours a day because of, of what they do. But they're all enclosed, like you wouldn't know it driving by that that's what they're doing.
And as a processor, I imagine the dispensaries are not, the sellers are nowhere near that.
No, no.
You know, dispensaries is gonna be like any retail, yeah, basically.
That's more. I mean, you can put, you can put zoning regulations in place that say, no open windows. You can, you know, do something.
I'm talking about salary, uh, salaries for dispensaries, like they're not gonna be paying that amount. From an economic impact perspective.
Question for Lolly, on the production. I know obviously there's businesses in town that require a lot more intensive fire. When there's a fire at one of those places, it's a big deal. I've, do you know anything about these type of dispensaries, how?
There are no special.
Okay, it wouldn't be a big deal.
That wouldn't pertain to that, it'd be a typical occupancy.
Be a typical.
Uh, like, like Ford Culture, something like that would have to be sprinkled in.
I bet if that column fire, you'd have more people show up. Talk about community, community event.
I'm glad you said that.
You know, I remember that my, that my tongue too.
Yeah, always get there first, right?
Well, I guess maybe I'm hearing that it wouldn't hurt to do perhaps a survey, maybe a public hearing just to start to get public info. And ask of any kind of decision they can.
I would also ask that that, um, differentiate in that public opinion bowl. You know, do you want recreational and or, um, or?
Dispensary.
Yeah, dispensary and adoption, or one or the other, or none at all? I mean, I think that all of those have to be options that we're on about.
When it comes to a processor, do they, would they, if recreational became legal, would they differentiate between?
I don't think medical and recreational. I mean, unless we put it into the.
In a processor, a dispensary obviously would, but I'm just thinking, um, I think we need to go under the assumption that if it is legal for recreational when we're going about a, um, maybe a survey of some sort, just thinking to the future if it did become, we've got it included, same actually, but.
Like maybe just a question that says like, would it, would your answer change if it was made, if it was made recreational?
Yeah.
Would that change your opinion and if so, why?
And yeah, I don't think with the dispensary, I don't know what Monroe or Warren County did, but I just remember looking at both of their facilities. They're both very well-made, present, I mean, they are very professional looking buildings.
Yeah, it's a real business, it's a good business, yeah.
So it's like, I don't, I don't want people thinking that it's just like this little like lollipop store where you just go and get their stuff. Like these are.
And it is a, technically, it is a destination, which is why it's coming. So like we've added, if we decided to go forward with something like that, we've added a destination to Middletown. Just something we strive to do. I mean, I'll say.
I have, how much feedback did you guys personally receive? I got two people who contacted.
I had a ton of people.
Only have most or few million guests, and that's it.
Do this, we're for, I didn't get any negatives.
I got one.
It was just when the, the manager mentioned at the meeting, so it was right after that. So the council, I mean, so.
There were some emails and I would say that I've had multiple conversations just in, from behind the bar, um, where people have said that they absolutely think that we should reverse the moratorium, so.
I would like to see a little bit.
It's just a small cross section, so.
It's possible, if there's any market study available out there about the market and demand. I mean, I know it's hard because recreational, there's no, I don't know that you could really have that. But it, what, you know, where, where the current.
The demand is high. The demand is high, the demand is high.
The demand is high, just when they first started this process, they, um, like, the state of Ohio said in the number, they had a certain number of licenses. And really the reason this has come up a lot recently is they're releasing more licenses. So I think that has to be able to infer what the market's done because they've gone back to increase the number of licenses that are available.
And those licenses, it's almost like liquor license, it's a certain number per period. So that's why staff's getting the call, cause.
Cause there's none in Middletown.
Is it allowed here? I can get a license, I'll lock that up.
Yeah, cause they're asking.
Sixty and the whole state.
All the above.
Are there specific taxes associated with this and are other cities adding taxes associated? I mean, I guess that's another.
Ben, do you know, are you familiar with the taxing structure on medical?
No, actually I'm not happy to look into it.
I'm just curious.
Obviously we'll have a sales.
Tobacco tax kind of thing.
I think it's important, I, I love the idea of reaching out to the public and doing the survey and maybe doing the public hearing. I also think it's important for our police and fire chief, I, I think they're pretty secure all the way.
It'll weed out.
And if that's what they think, I mean, that's to me, cause they're the ones.
And you can do one and not the other.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And then keep it in the front of your mind and.
Yeah.
We, do we have many crimes or any missed calls associated with marijuana?
You know, marijuana grow, but nowadays marijuana grow, we just had it a few weeks ago, was an instant sentence, it's a criminal sentence.
Well, I can tell you, I guarantee they have a lot more calls on alcohol than they do marijuana. Not incomparable.
As for most of.
And also.
Not incomparable.
I hate to say it too, but I also think the calls we get on marijuana are because it's laced with something else.
That's true.
And the fact that even there's fentanyl and drug supply and, and those types of issues would cause more concerns.
We've had a lot of, a lot of people like, uh, a couple of people say they just smoked marijuana and they're stripping down and running around crazy. So it's laced with something else, obviously.
I mean, that being, that being said, I think, um, that almost makes an argument for regulated drugs because that's what happens when they're buying it on secondary markets is that they're getting things that are laced with something. I mean, think about the kids, you got high school age students who are experimenting with things and they, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying that the more we encourage that sort of off, like street sales instead of maybe creating a, a safer, better avenue for it. I mean, that's another one of the big, um, talking points, so.
So is the, is the concern of the union about altercations and theft and things like that at the store as opposed to?
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, are they gonna be selling to kids? Cause you know, we, we do, we do routine checks for alcohol, cigarettes.
Yeah.
But then that would be something else we would be concerned with, you know, what's their security at night? Um, I mean, obviously we had the gun theft at one of the pawn shops there, they had twenty-two guns. So that's the last thing we wanna do is have to constantly monitor a retail store with.
Yeah.
A lot of.
A lot of inventory.
The, the retail stores, it's not like you can just walk around there and buy it. You have to have appointments.
Yeah.
To go in. To go in, and there is security in there.
Well, one thing I, one thing I don't like, the only thing I didn't like about the list that was up there was, it said eighteen, you have to, if you're under eighteen as a parent or guardian, I don't think if you're under eighteen, you should be in there at all. Even if you're with a parent or guardian, that's just my opinion, don't mean I'm right, but I don't think if you're under eighteen, you should be in there, even with a parent or guardian. I, I think that's, you're just asking for trouble, like you said.
Yeah.
I agree.
You got a ten, sixteen year on there, who's to say you don't, yeah.
But does the card, does the medical card belong to that, that person who's under twen, I mean?
No, I think you have to be eighteen to have the medical card, I think.
You have to be eighteen to have a card, I mean, I, I honestly don't know.
There are, there are some seizure patients under eighteen, you have medical.
Yeah.
Oh, was there?
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
So that's maybe the reason why the under eighteen.
But most, that's really, those get it through prescription and it's not necessarily forms they get it in at the, uh, at the dispensary.
Okay. Sure. Yeah, but they would have to have a, a medical, I mean, as, as long as it's still medical, they do have to have a medical license.
Yes.
And if they were to make it recreational, I assume that they would put in stipulations of age and things like they have with other regulated substances.
So just to keep us on schedule, it sounds like maybe get some additional information from the public, survey, maybe a public hearing. And then, in the future, you can revisit this issue based on that, that information that you get, something. Uh, wanna talk a little bit about, uh, the Middletown Regional Airport, just a couple of updates to keep us on schedule tonight. Um, and I'm gonna look to Susan quite a bit of this stuff, but I'm gonna start. Um, as you know, we've introduced the fixed base operator contract. That contract will be, uh, for approval next, uh, Tuesday, March first, uh, with AMS. Uh, the goal really is to promote additional airport activity, to utilize our airport as an economic driver and increase revenue so that the city subsidy is ultimately lessened or eliminated over time. Um, and, and Susan, I know you've dealt with these, uh, models for FBOs, so I'll watch you cover some of that.
Sure, I think, um, part of what we've been introducing is this idea, there's a couple of different ways to run an FBO, um, and this contract does represent a different way for us. Traditionally, we have had an owned FBO model where effectively we contract with a company who, um, takes care of all of the services and then, um, maintains the profits. Um, this proposal is for a managed FBO where the city, um, actually is employing that, um, company to run the FBO on our behalf. We do maintain some of the risk, we also maintain control of the profit centers, so that we can, um, look towards the gas revenue and things to help fund operations as revenues increase. Um, just went up a point of reference, Safe Skies has been filling in that FBO role temporarily, um, that current cost at the moment is seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars a month. That equates to about two hundred and five thousand dollars and some change per year. Um, is proposing, uh, seventy thousand dollars a year in a management fee, and then we do maintain some of that ongoing liability for the operations.
Okay, clarify that the total amount for the new one is approximately three hundred and five thousand per year.
Yeah, so it's seventy for the, um, the strict management fee, and then the city maintains that ongoing, um, risk, what, what I was discussing, the, for the operational concern.
So it's approximately a hundred thousand dollars more per year, and we're still not covering snow and grass and all that, is that accurate?
No, so we, on top of the money that we pay, um, Safe Skies, we do have some ongoing obligations too, so some of it's not an, an, an equated transaction. There are some things that would be included in that three hundred and two thousand, I think it was, for the, um, AMS contract that are not included in that two hundred and five, and what we spend currently. If you, can we hold on that for one second, cause I do have a, uh, I do have a quick thing, a later, like, verified it.
Sure, if I can move on it.
Yeah.
Uh, Susan, uh, Safe Skies, when is their contract expire?
The end of this month.
And, um, Mar?
End of, uh, sorry, the end of March.
End of March.
Yes, so we are looking forward to April one transition. Um, Mr. Farrell had asked for some comparisons on some of the financials of running the airport, so we put this together. Um, again, it is a bit of a difficult comparison because the business models have changed. Um, what you will find is, we try to separate out, is, um, the idea of capital revenue versus operating revenue, capital expenses versus operating expenses, and then what we had is debt issuances at the airport. Uh, there has traditionally been a city subsidy for operations, I think, and every year, it's, it was pretty consistent right around ninety thousand dollars up till the transition, where the city put it over in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. Uh, and then it has been up and down since then.
And as Susan mentioned, there's been some real differentiation year to year, because in some years, a lot more was spent on the capital than other years. Uh, we've recently de-fees the debt service and that alters, you know, what you're gonna see in the debt service up here, so that's gone down. But when you combine all of the sort of debt of revenue versus expenditures, you sort of see, from twenty seventeen, we start to see at least we've been cutting this down each year. And the goal, obviously, to get to that where those parentheses are going inside, we're not having a negative.
When did we start using the sewer and water fund into the airport?
Thank you, that was a good transition where I was going next, is we've always had a traditional subsidy here, um, and in twenty, well, I believe we started the conversation in twenty eighteen as we were working through the master plan stuff, and our consultant indicated to us that because our wellfields are on air, what they consider airport property, the FAA wants to see some associated ground lease with that because we're maintaining that as an undevelopable piece of land. Uh, it did not get implemented until twenty twenty, I believe, um, and that is, um, for the twenty twenty-two budget, that ground lease is the only subsidy that is set to go from the city to the airport. It totals about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year, that is a function by the surface area of the wellfield and what can be developed in a, per, um, uh, area, excuse me, an area effectively rate.
More in fact, accounting survey, suddenly they said you have to have that charged.
The FAA, um, through our consultants, communicated that's the appropriate way to handle that.
Can you pass that communications to council?
The communications, yeah.
Yeah, that the FAA is requiring that we charge our citizens for the land that they own.
What we have is from our consultant, but I'd be happy to pass, where we're told that, and then if we can get additional information directly from the FAA, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, yeah, we need to go and trace it directly back to the FAA.
Susan, you want this line or you want the?
Uh, this one is fine. Um, the other part of the comparisons, um, I wanted to point out that in the twenty twenty-two budget, we have, um, one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, budgeted for airport operations. What you're gonna see on the left side of the numbers is what was currently budgeted. On the right side is a, a proposal of what this would work with the AMS contract. So, um, some of what is in the AMS budget would account for what we have already budgeted for airport operations. And so we can reduce what we have otherwise budgeted to an order to account for the money we would need for AMS. So you can see some changes of, for example, we wouldn't pay for travel and training, um, that goes into the AMS budget, so that can zero it out. Uh, we would maintain some of the liabilities for utilities, to telecom lines, et cetera. Um, we changed obligations with the cars, uh, we would not have the professional services budget because we're not paying that in or the monthly fee for the FBO out of that money. Um, some of the other costs go down, be with the contract, so the idea is to try and make this as budget neutral as possible to what we've already passed. So it gives you an idea of how to try and maintain our currently budgeted twenty twenty-two amount and still fit in this contract. Uh, and then, there's another discussion, what the actual proposed AMS budget is, that was what was included in your council packets. Uh, so things like their labor fees, management fee, um, then you can also see where facility repair and maintenance is included, their insurance that we would have otherwise had in our budget now shifts to this. Um, so it moves some of those costs over to this budget instead. Uh, I think that's the only thing we have on these, uh, that's what is, we're gonna touch on that.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah. You wanna touch on this?
Uh, yes, I'll be there.
And then, you cover the insurance, I thought I read in the contract that the city providing insurance, but that stated otherwise.
It's mine to say that they would have the obligation for insurance, but I'll be happy to double.
Pretty sure the contract is, we're not saying.
Well, could be something else that we'll, we have to go through, but the point being, um, we're not taking the double charge, so if it's gonna be a city obligation, obviously, we'll come, we'll take it back out of their budget and make sure it's a city budget item. Uh, but we don't wanna pay for things twice, so we're not allocating the city budget in there, so I'll be happy to take all of that before the meeting on Tuesday.
So in addition to the FBO, which we have proposed and will be coming for approval at this next meeting, we've been working for quite some time on the overall management of the airport that would be in separate hands, by a separate professional private entity as well. Uh, we've had ongoing discussions with a particular management group, we can't say that in a public forum who that is because it's under a non-disclosure agreement. We were executive session, we'll talk about it, but we're not. Um, we anticipate the opportunity will come to council for review, certainly in the first half of twenty twenty-two, hopefully as early as later March or early April. Uh, in both cases, for the FBO and the manager, it is truly to increase professionalism, credibility, overall revenue and activity over time. So when you look at the FBO contract, um, particularly, it's designed so that it is incentivized in the sense that the more fuel they sell, the more, uh, activity they have, the more revenue they generate, the more they, uh, gain from it, and also the more we gain from it because it's, it's in both parties' best interest. And the FBO, what the FBO doesn't do, of course, is the leasing, you know, of all of the properties, the hangers, the properties, the, um, uh, the development and maintenance of rules and regulations onsite, that also the, the airport manager, the airport manager will also be responsible for long-term planning, working through issues of future growth, deal with FAA on our behalf, things of that nature, so. The goal is, you know, we didn't feel we had skilled, professional people that have the skill set. It is much better to put it in the hands of folks who not only do it, but do it well, have done it for a long time, and have access to much larger organizations who have a lot of specialized skills and bring this specialized training and skills with them, and then we can take our airport to the next level. And ultimately, to decrease that subsidy and actually turn it such that it becomes an enterprise fund that starts to produce money rather than cost money. So that's been the goal, um, we hope to, to rally that that ultimate destination soon. And, um, kind of an update, as far as where both of those things are. Another thing, uh, we wanted.
This will be the last slide, if you wanna touch on that, but.
Okay, so that's, that's why.
Yeah, maybe a slide.
Then one other thing is we wanted to talk a little bit about potential future, um, capital improvements or facilities at the airport tomorrow, as we talk about, uh, capital improvements. We'll touch on a little greater detail, we need for a parking lot there, uh, so we'll touch on that tomorrow, but there could very well be the need from our perspective for a particular type of hangar building that would serve the city's needs, uh, that we may have to build in the future, we talked more about that. Also, because of some ongoing litigation that we have, we could have the need to have to fund some additions to a hangar building too. So those kinds of things are larger capital improvements, would probably be best served by, um, bonding for them, particularly with the revenue streams that would support them, uh, would be more efficient, so. There could be some additional, um, facility improvements in the future. The other facility improvement that we hope could come to be would be the Butler Tech Aviation Training Facility, which was a big ask from Butler Tech to the county for their ARPA dollars, that was a ten million dollar project. Uh, that would be, you know, pretty neat in the sense that that'll bring a lot of new focus on aviation training and a lot of, uh, things attached to that industry, right, to the airport, so. Our hope is, again, it's not our ask, it's that of Butler Tech, but if they could be successful, that would be a lot for the airport and for that particular industry, create jobs in that industry. So, uh, kind of where we are, anything else you want to add?
I was gonna say, I thought it was very interesting as we're talking to AMS and, um, the like, about, um, that partnership with Butler Tech and how that benefits attracting, um, companies to the airport because, um, they're interested in that educational aspect of it. And then, um, we're, we're tapping into a market with that partnership that I think is really gonna be beneficial in driving other interests to town. Um, and it's come up in all the discussions that we've had, I think it's been an interesting portion of this, that that partnership is working out well for us.
Speaking of that, can you give an update on the grant that the city asked the state for for the education hangar?
Oh, um.
The city won the grant.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Uh, I think it was like three and a half million, wasn't it?
I pulled on much, I don't know.
Okay. I'm familiar with.
Twenty eighteen, I think?
It was a capital grant.
Okay, it was a capital grant, so.
I'm not, I don't, I don't know that it's still, it was for an education.
So this, this was originally still the Butler Tech Hangar Building, and the city at the time was part of a consortium of Butler Tech and the city and several others that were trying to find funding for it, this is pre-ARPA, and the city was granted seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars through a capital request. Because the, the full facility was not able to be built in the course of several years, that sort of fell away. That could be reauthorized in a new capital request, and as a matter of fact, with our lobbyists, we were having discussions just this last week over what our capital requests would lead to the state legislature, and one of the questions was, do we want to seek reauthorization of the seven hundred and fifty thousand? But one of the complexities of that is, in seeking reauthorization, we have to be pretty certain that the remainder of the facility would be funded. And we know it's about a ten to twelve million dollar facility. So if Butler Tech couldn't be certain that they were raising the remainders of those funds, we probably shouldn't be asking for the seven four fifty because they can't go, they can't make it happen, basically.
Yeah, I mean, I think originally, um, city staff stated that Cincinnati State had confirmed that they were going to be involved in it, which I spoke to Cincinnati State, they said they had no interest, um, so I'm just kidding.
But things have changed, originally, they're, um, cause I just heard Matt go over it today, they had reached out to a lot of different partners, and I think they had like six and a half million dollars in verbal commitments. But this was like four years ago, they lost the city manager, there's been a lot of issues at the airport, and they kind of died. And so the hangar idea kind of died until the ARPA came, and then Butler Tech said, hey, we're not gonna try to raise this money for the hangar, let's just ask for the money from the county. And so they're, they're going on, you know, this is like their second way of doing it, so they're not trying to raise money anymore.
Okay.
And Cincinnati State was, but then they have their own airport, they said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna focus on our own airport in Harrison, but they were at the table. Um, Amy Walberg was there, and they were at the table, um, but really Butler Tech has a better relationship with Sinclair, so, um, they're fostering that relationship for a potential AMP school.
Thanks.
So there is a chance we could give the seven fifty, and we would be very hesitant to ask unless we really felt the remainder of the funding was gonna be there.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that's where I think we wasn't fully ironed out the first time around, so. So if anyone can put a little pressure on the commissioners, so tell us when or when we're gonna get our money, that would be helpful.
Yeah, since we're, since we're scheduled to.
How long would it take if we, if we requested that money, how long would it take for us to get that redistributed to, I mean, like, reauthorized to us? I mean, so how, how would that work out timing-wise, when they find out and when we would have the potential to go back and ask for it?
Well, we kinda have to get our capital ask given fairly soon, the problem is, the decisions will be made till much later in the year at the legislature. And we really would hesitate again asking for the reauthorization if there wasn't a county commitment for those remainder of those funds.
Is there a, uh, is there a time cap on when we can ask for that to be reauthorized? I mean, is there an expiration date to that, is there, you know?
There, there is, I just don't know what it is off the top of my head, and it was moving a lot of time.
They do the budget, they do the capital every two years, two years.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So we would have into next year to ask for that reauthorization?
No, they, they'll do it this year, and when it's done, it's done for two years, and they'll look at.
No, oh, when it's done, okay. So then we have to ask.
They do the, they do the state budget where money goes to the state every, every other year, and then they do this capital where it comes from the state to the districts, and that is off years.
Okay.
Cause they do a buy-in, they do a two-year budget, and then the off-year.
And they've already awarded it to us, and it's just like re-appropriating it, so that's just we're gonna spend it, so. We just don't want that to.
Yeah, I mean, I'd hate for the opportunity to use that money to go away if we were able to, and I guess that just falls on how soon we would hear that from Butler County to Butler Tech.
I agree, but the worst thing we could do is to sort of be the boy that cried wolf one more time, where we ask for something we didn't spend before, get it reauthorized, and again, can't spend it because the money doesn't come through, so if it were come through, we'd be right there, no question about it. Um, any other questions on the airport? We're almost done, that we said we'd get you out of here. Any other questions about the airport or anything else that we've talked about today?
All the, all the slides, are they, they shown on the YouTube thing, or we have copies or?
We will get you copies, they're all, they're all part of the PowerPoint, we can get it all electronically, but I believe, I think they'll be, you know, all part of the, the YouTube, the streaming as well, yeah. Any other questions, or we'll let you go and see you here tomorrow, eight thirty?
We don't start till nine?
No, we don't start till nine, we have breakfast for today, breakfast.
A little flex there.
We'd see it all.
We know it's important to me.
I guess a little fish.
Oh, yeah, we need that.
Oh, yeah, spinach and turkey officially.
All right, we will adjourn until tomorrow at nine AM, technically.
Technically.
No discussions about anything at breakfast, only personal life. No discussions about anything at breakfast, only personal life.